On this meeting of the Berlin Wilson Reno School District. This meeting is being recorded. Your image and audio may be broadcast. We're going to begin with the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments? Has anyone received any communications that they would like to share? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So, I can second?
Sorry.
So, my, oh, thank you. Um, special? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Is there any discussion? Um, all in favor? I am. And I as well opposed. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented passes. Um, I'm going to do a little moving around just so that we don't leave these principals who have had a busy couple of weeks. Uh, and I think we're going to start with their reports.
These are our things.
Maybe we should let's go first?
Um, so for our report, we talked about the fact that on the 26th, we got a community area presented a special conference session for staff. Um, where we're talking about the administrative teams work on the nursery opening and prison. And I, um, kind of made it to our board of commissioners. Um, so we have new staff. We have, um, Sheila Cooney, who's our special education teacher. We have Travis Garrett, who's from basketball, actually, um, technology engineering teacher. We have launched her over here. Um, Katie Schmidt is our, is a new role, actually, that we put in this year. So she is part, um, school justice department, part of school council. And we have Gina Vlade, who took over for Carol. That's since Carol went through. And we just hired a new school teacher, Tricia Sims. We had a paraprofessional, Michelle Sandra, from our home was in elementary. We also have a new paraprofessional in our preschool, who is their classroom. And we just actually, we're slowing on the list because it sounded like we were dealing with a lot of individuals. Um, she was a sub one, and so she's going to be a paraprofessional now. Actually, she started this week. And then number of minutes to add to the capacity. Uh, for our moments, we had the first day of school, uh, approximately 35 students, grade six, twelve. And this is healthy. I broke it down quite by grade. Um, the average grade size is around me. And it was very nice. We had the PTO and student council volunteers bringing our students when they came in. Team Six did a great job as usual, meeting young kids and helping them to accommodate at school. Um, Carol and I met all the grades actually throughout the day, both the handbook. And we also linked our, um, student handbook presentation to that, so we were able to see that. And one of the things that we're focusing on this year is we're starting a campaign, a campaign called SAD Box. For the kids as well. It's a part that's been going really long. Uh, for Chromebooks, we're now one-on-one with all students involved in issue of Chromebook. Uh, which is great because we use those for educational programs and also for Texas at the same time in their class. And, um, there's also a voluntary insurance policy that goes along with every book. And for athletics, um, we are focused on another special season. We had some teams do really well last year. So then, field hockey and soccer teams are looking to be adding their title team last year. And also, um, soccer teams who, um, did very well, uh, since the state championship as well. Uh, grow across country as well, and boys are looking to come on their season. I didn't have to report, but I know our football athletes did really well. We more encourage them to turn into their own. And for upcoming events, we have school pictures and our student class photo on the A. Um, we have a P D day next week on the 21st in our open house.
So, do you have any questions, everyone?
I just have one, really quick one. Um, I know we talked about this before, but, um, so the problem of anything that we have. Our school handbook, that's online. Um, differs from what was presented. Just like, so meaning, um, a cellphone, electronic policy that's in hand with our line is different from cellphone use for high school students. So in essence, a cellphone used by high school students only, that's not him. That I think was signed off.
Okay. Now, sure, you have your.
Well, uh, that's part A.
I just had to go through it.
Okay. Okay, so what people are signing off on is the presentation or the handbook?
Oh, on the handbook.
Okay.
Right.
So these have been added, then the cellphone use for high school students only exactly?
That's just the procedure we go with that.
That's not them.
Well, the handbook outlines the consequences for, um, using the phones properly. But the procedure, and, you know, we talked about that, but we also, because now that we are going down to the law office, because COVID, we're asking the, you know, the school to give them their offers, so they're not just checking, because they're not supposed to have a really good offer. But we've always had so that high school kids, they're not supposed to be, except for between classes and that's about it. But our handbook outlines that if they're not using the phone, that there will be, you know, the consequences for that.
Okay.
But I could say a little more, because I know you, knowing that, I just haven't mentioned.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, I understand.
Does the handbook outline problems?
No. Can you have a?
So it outlines the discipline, they're not using a phone.
It talks about teachers especially, it talks about, you know, the educational purposes of things, but, uh, they can do what they say that they can actually provide a bunch. I have to take a look at that, so, because I think about that up today, I just don't.
No, I understand, I understand. Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, follow up on, um, so we're talking about using cellphones in, at times like that. Are, is that, is the policy you have in place typical for what other high schools are doing when it comes to students using cellphones? I ask because I just, I don't have high school students right now, but I have friends and family who do, and I hear so many stories about the extent to which bullying occurs and other things happen with their cellphones. Obviously, we can't control it outside of the school day, but I'll need you in mind for other districts and schools to give you the perspective, allowing students to have their cellphones.
Yeah, I would say yes, just based on my presentation and previous systems, around people, and things that I was part of, where we would talk about those types of things. I would say yes.
Sally, I thought the presentation that you, you gave at, um, you know, I think the first day that you did it. Um, I don't know how we feel about it, but I thought it'd be really helpful to share with the parents, just because those slides were amazing, to know that they're working on kindness and how you're going about it. And then even just the information in the slides was really helpful. I read a few parts aloud to a student applying that tenth year. For, you know, strength in that, um, but it really was helpful.
Yeah, I think I pointed to the one that's there.
Oh, good, good, yeah. I must have missed that, but I appreciate it. It was very well, very well done. And it was just, like I said, I can't say I'm above the kindness part of it. Just think we all really need it right now, and to see that positivity and to see it be an expectation is really just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't able to access your presentation in years, denying me access. So you're just telling me what you're doing work on?
Um, yeah, I can tell that. I'm sorry for not answering to that. So we presented kind of a basic introductory key on equity to help staff members realize that this is something they're taking seriously, obviously, this school year and the school year is coming forward. And teaching, um, staff that, you know, they're working on working on development and just to be mindful of the course they were also presenting in the classroom. Because often times you don't know internally what the student has gone through, whether it has something to do with their social and economic background, their family background, if they have a mental health thing going on. So just kind of be mindful of that, you know, in and out of the classroom. And making sure that we're really developing the core of our students. Because once we have that rapport and commitment to getting to know them, we can really start to meet them when they're at the next phase of education. So throughout that presentation, I believe we threw, um, we showed three videos. One was just, um, someone's perspective on, I think, those of just like whole relationships. That was done by Evan E. Green, which was a tech mom. And it just got the conversation going up. As educators, we're learning each day too from our students. And kind of enhancing the idea of what's our power, purpose, and responsibility. And then more to remind other students, they can also teach us too, what is our power, purpose, and responsibility each day. Some days we know as educators, we might feel like we're not reaching our students, but you never know, and they're going to realize that they got me that day, they understand what we're going through. So when it comes to equity in classrooms, just be mindful of how we approach that. We have students that feel very comfortable here, identifying their preferred pronouns. Going to their needs and make sure we are holding the staff and the curriculum. And also to be mindful of curriculum, you know, like we use resources in practice, but thinking about the end of the person, which is only one minute.
What do you have this?
So, Francis, we have a art teacher that lives on portraits. And she was talking about how, um, or he was talking about, like, how in the past that, um, you know, a lot of times we go to museums, the portraits are all of, you know, like, framed now, you know, I mean, and how, but there's actually a lot of them out there that represent a good culture. And so that, he brings that into his example. You know, so it's still less than a part, right? But there's also something that hurts. Have you been classed?
Yeah, I did a couple classes.
Oh, you did, I think I taught for you for the others.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell?
Well, thanks very much. Of course, I, you know, I, I have to mention my new best friend, who is not here this evening, but she's not well. We'll take the fun out of playing with the best elementary school. But I'm the best elementary school. I'm sure she's a lot. Doing better than me. Um, I tried to keep it brief because we have a super long agenda. You have my report, and obviously, we ask a question July. We brought 223 children into the building on the first day of school, and we managed to send them all home, and they cried. So that's always a win at the elementary level. I take it, or actually was once. But that's okay, because that's what kindergarten kids do. Uh, just a couple of updates for you as we start the year. We did school pictures. We, um, I always like to update the year, you know, kids that come, well, a lot of them come dressed up. And then where the boys come dressed up from the waist up, saying handsome shirts, nice ties, and their shorts. But it's a lot of fun. This year, just to give you a sample of what it's like to be an elementary school student now. Because the day's a little different, we don't have as much time in the morning. We always take a picture every year of all of the teachers. We all gather together, and it's a nice shot, got a bunch of them. Keep trying to notice who's hanging them up. But the teachers all got together, but I only hear like five minutes. So the kids start to come in, and we're having a way, because it took, like, it always takes fun when we think, well, teachers are waiting, the kids aren't, the teachers are waiting, the kids are lighting up. And they all just, I, we had them sit in the gym, the kids who got dropped off. Because we're getting our picture taken, and they're sitting quietly, because they're good for early children, developing. And they all stood up, and they all lined up, and off they went. First, you know, week of school, to their classes. We had no classroom, because of course, the teachers were all right there. There was nobody else that were in the classroom. But I was just amazed at how, like, this is how we do things. And I think that's, uh, you know, part of this whole school-wide behavior growth. And you kind of build in for kids, these are the expectations of that. And, you know, it's the elementary version of what, you know, Sammy and Carol talk about at the middle high school. These are our expectations every day. Um, because kids take a lot of help coming out. So picture there was a lot of fun. We have open house coming up on Thursday. You're all invited. It's, uh, it is a two-hour extravaganza. Um, instead of ninety minutes, we're arranging three sessions for parents, which is great for the few parents who have more than one or two children. Um, Steph do the presentations. I do. And the olden days, when, you know, Castello was the principal. She'd have everybody come to the auditorium, and she'd give a lovely talk, introduce everyone. And I, a little shy, I don't know. When we do a video, I send them, I'll link it to a YouTube video, right? Welcome people. And Officer Goody's going to do a little something on safety, and of course, it's Officer Goody, so we say a little something. We're talking ten minutes. Um, but we're hoping for the best. Please feel free to come to that. Um, and I have a lightly listed staff who are new, and I'm not going to read it to you, because you guys can't read through stuff. You were doing elementary schools. If you have any questions.
Did you say three sessions or two sessions?
Three sessions, three thirty-minute sessions. I just sent an email out to clarify for parents at six o'clock. So I've just got.
Yeah, I'm just looking at.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We thought two forty-five-minute sessions, and the teachers are like, are you crazy? We cannot talk to adults for forty-five minutes. So, but we had to.
John, I'm looking at the enrollment numbers. Turn on the, the two twenty-three, P G through grade five, how does that compare to last year?
Uh, slightly up. Not huge. Uh, it's like, we are seeing a kind of continued slow growth. Yes, so there's, uh, set of houses now being built literally right next to school. Um, and it's been a few more children out there.
Probably a little bit closer. As I look at this, you get two classrooms per each grade K through five. What's your staff, beyond the teacher in those classrooms? How many of those classes have an aide that's in the room assisting the teacher?
Several have aides, but they're typically tied to one or two or three special education students. The days of, like, just classroom aides is long.
Why?
Um, partly funding. It's, uh, it's expensive. It's, a paraprofessional doesn't make a ton of money, but by the time you toss in the benefits and all the other stuff, um, it gets very expensive. Um, sometimes it's not worth it.
Do you have any kindergarten cards with that?
We do, we do not at this point because of the staffing costs that we're having. I'm done on a paraprofessional right now.
Are there lines for kindergarten aides in both of the kindergarten classrooms?
I'm sorry, what?
Are there staffing lines for kindergarten aides?
There's one kindergarten this year.
Okay.
There is the one exception to the, it's not always helpful. Kindergarten, I have to do this while kindergarten classes. Um, it's, it is hurting that. Many need the adults support.
I see here, and I see in the B E S numbers too, is the kindergarten enrollment, you've got forty-one students, so twenty and a half students in each class. And a half students goes. Twenty-five on average. You know, as, as that number potentially continues to increase, at what point does it require us to add a third teacher in a certain grade versus does the addition of an aide, let's say, help offset the? Where's the breaking point where we say, hey, aides can help?
In my view of a little school, there is no room for a good teacher.
Okay.
Um, if we get that big, we've got a problem in this community, so we have a different discussion. Unlike Boleson, where they have space, and then we're just leaving.
You're there now. I look at the first grade class of Boleson, the elementary that increased by about ten students from kindergarten year. It went from seventy to twenty. If you have a similar increase in new kids coming into first grade this year, you've got twenty-three, twenty-four in classroom in first grade.
It is, that's a lot of kids, especially when you're trying to do small group work. And that's where paraprofessionals are really helpful, because you've got a teacher who's doing direct instruction, but you want to take four or five kids off to the side.
Right.
And you want to work with them.
Or went to the bathroom.
Wow, although thank goodness, you know, back to routines, take them by themselves.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, there's going to be a challenge, and staffing is.
There's just no space.
Yeah, Berlin, it's, we're too small. There are no entries.
So you can't even add, oh, no, you do have two classes per grade.
Per grade, right.
Okay. Last year you only had one in fifth, or?
No, we had about one fifth grade. The last one had just one was, I think, twenty-three years ago? That does not work for, um, for a whole bunch of, mostly social reasons.
John, is there a threshold number that you keep on your radar that is a tipping point?
Downstairs, the primary grades, eighteen. There's probably your street spot upstairs, twenty-two.
One part way.
No, you're not. In some cases, yeah.
So I have a lot of similar questions that would happen with all that. A couple here. As the grades go higher, the numbers get lower. Does that have anything to do with, like, you track, or do you know how many withdrew completely from school because of COVID during those couple of years? Or just haven't come back? Or is there a situation?
Almost zero on that.
Okay.
We don't lose kids. We lose kids when they leave us. Um, I think they enter into middle school, maybe starts to see people start to skirmish a little bit, and I think it happens again to high school. We see, because, oh, yes, there was a chance.
So that's just basically the function of the.
This is much more a reflection of, we were a smaller town.
Yeah.
Lot of buildings.
Yeah, a lot of buildings. Um, my other question, kind of round equity. You've got forty-one kindergartners, forty second graders, but then you only have twenty-six fourth graders, still two teachers for all of them. Giving class hours of twenty, which is over your eighteen, but then only thirteen to the fourth grade. So how do you kind of handle those technical issues where the kids, I mean, that's a huge difference. The teacher has one more time, but you can do it potentially for thirteen kids versus twenty.
Absolutely. So it's more, so there's two parts to that. The first part is that you can't take away, in this case, a fourth grade teacher, and they have to go teach first grade.
Right.
Uh, part of it's just structural, because K one, two's on downstairs, right, and three, four, five's on upstairs. The other part, because we've experienced it before, and I know Carol went through it a couple of classes. The, uh, when you go down with one teacher, you lose all of that kind of momentum. You get, so right now in Berlin, we have basically the same six teachers, and we've had them for a few years. They are rock solid in what they teach, but you have to let some of them go. Because that's really what would happen, if we decided to combine that fourth grade into one group, which we did, which would have been our decision five years ago. Um, those kids then suffer.
Yeah, I don't think it was more yellow way, we kind of, I would say, getting a third class for those, one class, which is impossible. But really, it is. But this is probably not going away.
This is something that over the next few years, this is probably going to want to take over.
You have major schools, right? In the district, one district, one.
I'll take my sign first, but I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I noticed that Carol Young is in there for a little while. My first year of teaching, she was a first grade teacher, and she was the gold standard, so.
Yeah.
Bless her return.
Carol is still a gold standard.
Um, she's just amazing.
And you would never know that she's been teaching forever. She's just, you know, full energy. What's been cool, you know, we all associate Carol with first grade, she taught first grade for half her. Um, but she's loving fourth grade. And a loving math, which really, it's surprising, because we have me in first grade too, and I just assumed that's where she moved on about. But she's trying to go back to fourth grade, which I guess she had done earlier in her career. And, you know, it's the thing that teachers move around and will realize, you know, fourth graders, they can tie their own shoes. It's.
John, just going back to what's happening with paraprofessionals, so it sounds like you have open position for paraprofessionals right now, you can't vote?
Yeah, part of it, it's, um, they're open because they're connected to maternity duties. And I can't find people to take those jobs early. They won't, because right now, it's like, to get someone, you really have to get them to leave a different choice.
Yeah. And, uh, B E S, I believe, will be have some chart function of the, the empty, is that correct?
Yeah, they actually, and, um, Janelle, Inspector, it's not here, I spoke for a poll earlier today, just on that. And they interviewed two people that they're feeling like they're moving to higher, so that's going to help.
What's, what's preventing us from being able to attract this from, or what they would, would be candidates for the job?
It's the job.
It's what?
It's the job market. You hear it everywhere. I was talking, uh, Missy Tucker, one of my third grade teachers, her husband works for Target, and they're having a problem. You go to restaurants, and they're having a problem. You go to, you know, the grocery store, and the shelves outside. Uh, it's a problem everywhere. We put out ads for different positions, and we get like, it's not like somebody posted for Paris. We got nine applications of the nine. We could only interview five, the other four were so inappropriate. I'm sure there are good kind of bricklayers, but that's not the spittle that we're looking for. Of the five that we've been interviewing, three turned down with a phone.
Do they say what?
Say they're going to the job.
And do, as paraprofessionals now also?
Somewhere, somewhere closer to home, religion decided not to. It's a really tough market. Same thing's true for teachers, very hard. Also, in the past, new teachers would be willing to take parrot jobs for a year, but there's such a shortage, so they don't have to do that.
To what extent, you know, where our, we talked in the exam, this is the last budget, something to do with looking at the pension money salary side for Paris in our district compared to ours. I would, I would think that there could be opportunity to steal paraprofessionals, to lack of better terms, in other districts. If we're offering better opportunities, right, is that what you find?
It's so true sometimes. It is frequently the very last thing people ask you.
Yeah.
As far as the job pay. Um, she's saying he's been really good about paying what it pays. Um, so I felt more so than at other times in my time here. I had felt like I can use, you know, the budget to kind of entice people a lot. We've had to do it a few times to get people to come in. It's especially true when it's only for a certain period of time. But like, we never found a preschool teacher. You know, we had, uh, we had pieced all that together. We only found a first grade substitute, very good.
Those teachers, are they part of the teacher's union, or are they part of the paraprof?
We've mentioned Paris last year.
What did our Paris? What did Paris look like?
They're on a scale, you know, they're on a step scale, like, like, like all the other divisions. I don't have them all on top of my head.
Because that would be a.
I think I'm just on my own.
Wait, I think you're just my boss now, I'll just say. Just like. Especially if you want to.
You can increase it.
That's something first look, I think that's, you know, certainly.
Any other questions for Mr. Campbell? Thank you very much. I suppose if you would like to go, be with your families, rest after a long day, please do not go to the evening. We appreciate that you're here.
Thank you.
Mr. Zhang, you tried to not go. Uh, we're going to, we're going to go to, uh, Mr. Zhang's goals. He's asked to be next, and he's ready to present.
Yep. So these, uh, these are a surprise to you. I've talked to, talked to you a couple of times. The student learning goal, thank you. Student learning goal, um, two pieces, one was hiring new administrators. So those are going to require full search, which each take about, you know, two to two and a half months to get committees together. Um, it will be, so it'll be the high school principal, the assistant principal, maybe an additional assistant principal, depending on how the, um, restructuring goes. Uh, that's why that is a question mark to me there, um, near the next to assistant principal. The principal at B E S, um, obviously, we got, who's turning out to be a great principal in his intro, but that'll require full search. And then a curriculum director, I got a question mark next to that also, depending on, um, the, how the superintendent search goes. And then the second part of that, the restructuring of the middle school, high school front office. That's something we've been wanting to do for a while, um, so we're starting to put together a list of districts in Massachusetts that have a middle and high school in the same building, and we'll start investigating, you know, what they do. The advantages, disadvantages, is a cost to it, because it's most likely going to require at least one more administrative position. Um, but certainly, you know, teachers I've talked to in this building have said to me, this is what we've been asking for. Because middle school is very complacent, high schools, and it require, um, you know, a certain amount of attention, direct attention, so. So we'll be doing that, and I'll, I'll present the, certainly, the plus versus passive budget, because there is a budget impact. And so I want you to see that before we move for the district improvement goal. That's going to be the enrollment piece, um, to include things like birth rate, real estate trends, new buildings in town, um, new, new building permits. And tie that to budget needs, facilities needs, transportation, just some of the things that John talked about. I don't think we're any yet, but, you know, we keep getting all these little surprises. Now, the numbers you see now for a moment, that's opening day numbers, those aren't the October one numbers, those aren't the official numbers that we have to report. So, you know, no one should panic or say, oh, great, we have been numbers this year, until, there's always movement in the first few weeks. And so, um, we always use the October one number, and then the April one numbers again to see what's happened in the year.
Is that significant in the year or not?
Could be. I mean, I.
I mean, I know, in John, I won't speak to John, but I know ACE is up to five, six additions in one grade, so, and usually at the lower, so, and most of the time it takes place over the summer, but you can get some movement. So we'll look at, we expected around fifty-five or sixty K, which we didn't get, so we'll, we'll see. It doesn't mean, obviously, there's a lot of building going on, and that needs to be, you know, just because you see a blip, doesn't mean, you know, it opens your eyes to us, you know. I know when I came, I told the story many times, say, oh, we're, and normal is going down, I just drove up to see what, all the business building going on, so I don't know how that worked. Sure enough, we see an increase. So I think we should do, you know, more extensive enrollment projections, uh, for this year, going forward as a transition, as I transition away from these positions. And then, um, the third part, the professional practice goal, is the mentoring, began to have, uh, new director of finance and operations, uh, new facilities manager, uh, doing, a grand, grand new, uh, director of people personnel, it is only six months into the job, and that is proven to be a can of special education. Uh, we're still hiring, still hiring personnel in that department, especially in New York, it's been, it's been very, very difficult. No, we're getting there, we're getting there. Um, so, uh, we assigned a outside mentor for the high school principal, and John is going to be acting as the mentor for the BES principal, Don Marie, for this year. We naturally have that person, whoever that is, will require an outside mentor, an official mentor, not the John official, but these are inside candidates. Uh, John will also, by the way, be working with, uh, the, uh, some of the literacy pieces that have been successful at BMS, so. And still the principal of BMS at the same time, so it doesn't get away.
Just in the best of.
Yeah. We have new, in some of the squads, a new, uh, high school assistant principal, who's doing a great job, a whole different great job, but those are going to require, um, full searches, those aren't the kind of jobs that the town just said that, just pick what you want, it doesn't require a full search, and, uh, and they're important jobs, and that's, that's where the rubber meets the road, there's direct contact with the kids day to day, so we're going to make sure you get the right, the right people in those roles, so. Um, so, so that's it.
Jeff, last question, I'm going over to you on the enrollment projections. How are you going to do that? If that's what you'll do yourself, is there external, you know, support and helping and help with some of that, or do that just?
No, we do it. We get, we're, we're part of, uh, this is the way, the NASDAQ, one we're going to develop and it's, um, yeah, so, um, yeah, I present, I was okay. They do searches too, they do superintendent searches as well as, uh, MASC, twenty-five percent, or, yes, he does a lot, he does the other seven, five percent. But they, they send us raw data, and they have people that you can call, so you give them a call and ask them to help with interpretation and data, when I can't, you know, I can't get it myself. But, um, the principals take those jobs also, so, um, again, they'll go off ten years, although ten years, it's tough to get an accurate picture. We should be able to go off five, maybe five years, you know, accurately. And, and again, like, you know, when I, when I got there, I said enrollments decreasing off, if you look at the raw data, that there was a little downward blip, but certainly nothing that would have, should have caused us to say we need to reduce our budgets, which is what we ended up doing, so, um, you know, we can't make that mistake, we can't make that mistake this year. We just heard John talk about it, his enrollments, and that's the town that has the least of one hundred dollars right now, so.
Do you have a sense, Jeff, as to why not draw data from the NASDAQ?
I usually do the presentation, you know, top, yeah, sometimes, uh, you know, kind of mid to late November, I usually do the presentation, it takes about a month to go to the towns, and, you know, I check the records, the patents too, because sometimes the growth rates aren't, aren't correct. Um, I talk to them, find out where they collected their data from, because sometimes that's what, they'll have conversations on, but I've already had a conversation, a different conversation with the same person. Um, they'll talk to the towns, but, but I talk to them also. So, um, so the answer to your question did vary, some, you know, mid to late November, uh, then maybe you had the presentation, I, it's, I don't know.
The end of the year.
Yeah.
Jeff, the latest draft of the Boyles and Masterson Plan includes a section on public schools, and one of the things that says here is that, and I wondered where they want this number, it says that in 2020, 2021, enrollment was projected at two twenty-four, after enrollment was two seventy-eight. Two twenty-four seems like a projection that's pretty, pretty rare to, yeah, that's, I knew they thought that, um, you mentioned the National Center for Education Statistics.
Yeah, so what, what was it again?
So, Jeff, first, the section here said, Boyles Plan, you're school in good condition, that the settlement is fully accessible, according to the National Center for Education Statistics, enrollment at BES is consistently climbing. In the twenty-one, ending twenty most of the year, enrollment was projected for two twenty-four, after enrollment was two seventy-eight, an all-time high.
Into Adam, uh, where every school, that includes preschools as well, in that number, so I'm not sure what they're saying.
The two twenty-fourth number, that kind of threw me off.
Does that mean not include?
John, listen up.
We have a meeting, um, I'm going to be the school committee rep for the master steering plan committee, so they are skipping their September meeting, and we will, are you still on that calendar? No, they are going to, they are going to have a meeting in October, so I can ask too, because I don't know.
I, you know what, I mean, I guess the more I think about it, we, in, in, in Boyles, uh, the last five years, they're consistently, I would say, outperform projections, but that's, that's also because the, um, you know, they, it's a rolling average, so it's like a rolling three-year average data, so, and there was a little blip in twenty fourteen, so they, they, you know, that may have come from that piece, but, uh, the actual numbers have consistently been outperforming, uh, the projections, not as much in, you know, um, Berlin, they're a little closer. Again, they've had less, they've had less movement in town, they've had less building, so.
So why, I would think if I was doing this myself, using raw data, I would start with the town census. You have to list everyone in your household and the ages, so, and then I would probably take averages of who moved into town, using the census data, you know, like when people moved in, like take an average, all right, in twenty twenty-two, we had, you know, ten people moved into town. So is there any way we can figure out how they do this? I mean, that's a huge discrepancy, and, like, again, I'll ask the master steering.
Yeah, use the local records, if you use the local.
So they do use the census data?
No, I don't know about that one, I know they use the local ones, but I've got a neighborhood that has census every one to ten years.
Uh, no, it's every year for Boyles, and I can't go get every, every year.
Yeah, I was told by, from Roland, that all these actions are supposed to talk to you, John, but, uh, she hasn't said the same, that you would census the problem, but with all the new multi-bedroom building records, records don't necessarily allow that data, but they still have.
Oh, renters.
So a lot more apartments built, and, uh, she was upset that Roland didn't have accurate numbers for renters with the new River Bridge.
Yes.
Just that month.
I probably would look at the, uh, look at building, so, so I'm called a brick building, it still looks like, you know, it's, it's one and a half, three years, from time to time, it gets old, so there's an occupancy. So ju- just that, one and a half, three years, is a, there's a flexibility here. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's a, it's a projection, you, you know, the town says, well, you, you know, you got two hundred units, you're only going to get seven people, something like that, you've got to, again, look at that and think, all right, it's probably not going to be seven, is it going to be seventy, maybe seventeen, so, you know, some of it is, some of it is just that, it's, it's just a projection. I, you know, it's safe to assume we're not, we're not, enrollment isn't going down, you know, the populations in these towns are not going down, they're growing up.
Jeff, I just look at, in their draft here too, they have a projection of just an overall town population, they have twenty twenty at forty-eight, forty-nine in Boyles, and twenty forty, forty, twenty years from now, they're saying we're going from forty-eight, fifty to fifty twenty-six, a hundred and fifty people. I don't believe that that's anywhere close to number two thousand and thirty.
I, I think the actual projection of ten years for enrollment was that, you know, for the, for the district, so that, that would just be school age kids, and not even adults.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I'm going to ask when I go to that meeting, how they're getting that information?
But I don't know, I don't know.
Well, that might, I think when we know the source, it'll make sense. I also remember the NASDAQ report that you gave in February of twenty twenty, one of the few meetings that was interesting. Um, River Bridge, that's what it's called, correct, in this, it was being built, and the projection for Berlin for the next five years was zero new students.
Yeah.
And I remember both Cliff and I, being in the real estate world, were like, oh.
Yeah, the original was only twenty-nine, because they, it was twenty-nine, and then I got the, yeah, and it said zero, I don't know if it was mistaken, I actually called the guys that collected the data, and it was based on a conversation.
Yeah.
It's the way they configured the.
Yeah, because instead of three bedrooms, it was two, and it was within office, because you can't put a bed in there.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the enrollment projections, and I'll check, but I think the latest enrollment projection going out to twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two, was about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty additional. So that would just be, you know, that's not, that's not thirty years.
Just BES, you mean BES.
No, it's all district, all district, so, and, and, you know, we don't, we don't project it out that far, because it's difficult to project out ten years, the accuracy goes way down.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Jeff regarding his goals?
The only thing I know of, and it's just, some of these, I mean, I have some deadlines, so.
There are a lot.
Some of these are better if I have some deadlines through the year.
I got one deadline, Mike. It's only one you can count on. I can give you some deadlines, I can give you some, you know, I can give you some schedules.
Just like, you know, you're, they talk about restructuring, right?
Yeah.
We don't get that until June thirty.
No, 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 I, 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 I said that when you restructured, then that'll be, that'll be within the next couple of months, that will be before your first pass on the budget.
Yeah, that's what.
So your first pass vote is December, mid-December, um, I'll have it before that, because it needs to be put in the budget, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna vote on, uh, reconfiguring the Senate, the front office, then that position has to be put into the budget, so I know I have to do it before that.
Maybe said another way, just giving some visibility and timing, so that we can, not to, oh, you're accountable, as we know, you know what your real deadline is.
No, no, I'll put the time in, I mean, I know in my head, one of the stuff.
Assuming you're coordinating any activities, so. It'll, it'll just help with me, uh, writing the process.
Yeah, especially, yeah, because we're thinking ahead to writing the report, and that would be able, we'd be able to say, you mentioned deadline, we're going.
Yeah, I'll put something in there.
Don't miss it, I have a date.
I mean, I have some, I have.
What'd you say?
Don't miss it, I have a date.
We can look at our points.
No, no, I, I, I do have, I, I, I do know that some of these things are very time sensitive, so I'll make sure you, you have one, and way ahead of having to make a decision on.
And most of them, I would think, needs to be done by this calendar year, the enrollment stuff.
Yeah, the enrollment stuff, that was.
The reconstruction.
Reconfiguring.
Reconfiguring, I guess the mentoring is kind of, um, going.
That's not going. And the hiring stuff gets done in the, in the, in the spring, early spring, I'll, yeah, I'll put something on there, but, you know, the hiring should stop, should have somebody hired mid to late April, you know, that's when you get the people who are the first group that's out working, so. And we have a long time, so there's no excuse not to get the first crack at these.
Yeah. Can I ask you one additional, other question, I want to see a manual, why, why, why do we fill now for that restructuring?
Um, well, we had our principal retire, so it would be a good time to try to restructure the, the entire piece. I mean, really, we could have, we could have just put another, we could set another assistant principal, but if the decision was made, it would have been two principals, that'd become difficult for a principal who has a year or a year and a half to go to decide, okay, you know, wouldn't, it'd be very difficult to reconfigure an entire role for a principal at that time. If we didn't have COVID, you know, we, we, we would have backed it up another year, so.
Yes, we could have had that transition year, the additional principal.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's had an effect on a lot of, a lot of what, what we're doing, you know, pushed things around a little bit.
Sure.
And it's not like we can just, I am loaded to do one, it's just like, just the way it happened. It's also a good time, we have a lot of movement, we have a lot of people in interim positions, a good time, for the committing to look at it and have the least disruptive impact on the schools. While we're doing a lot of moving things around, let's decide what we're going to do.
Jeff, probably fair to say that we weren't necessarily expecting the retirement to be how it was of the previous principal, which perhaps will be sooner than we may have projected, but.
Yeah, maybe not, I wasn't totally surprised, I would say, or at least on conversations, you know. Let's say I'm more surprised that I'm leaving at the end of the year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, we are going to move on, so we're now on item six, we jumped around a little bit. Um, the chair's report, I'm going to discuss our goals, this is our update. The policy subcommittee is going to finalize the goals, the ratings peak areas deserving of attention, which would be budget support, uh, budget and support, hiring of a superintendent, and we're also going to review the school committee structure, um, and this is something that we're going to try to do within the next, you know, month or so. Um, it was also suggested that we review the Mass, Massachusetts School Committee law, possibly generate our own bylaws for operating guidelines for the school committee, since we don't have any, uh, that would define our purview, which we really kind of need via a guiding document. Um, this will be a topic that the policy committee will look at, and probably will look at it more in the winter, um, when things are a little bit slower and, um, really dig into it. And then just lastly, as a reminder, at our last school committee meeting, because, um, we weren't taped, we just wanted to let you know that we created subcommittees, new subcommittees, for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year. So we have the Personnel and Superintendent Evaluation, that was negotiation, and that is, um, Mrs. Julie Lee, myself, and Mrs. Megan Rowe, um, the Student Success and Technology Subcommittee, that would be Mr. Totten, Mr. Holmes, and Mr. Wilbur. Policy and School Committee Effectiveness, that's Mr. Totten, Mr. Holmes, and myself, and then the Budget Facilities and Safety Subcommittee, that's Mr. Wilbur, Mrs. Lee, and Mrs. Gray.
Point five, I think the first one you were to say is actually we, Gray, Will, and Totten.
That's right, we, you're correct, we changed that. Um, so Mr. Totten, yes, is on the, um, good catch, that's my fault. That's okay, no, and I should have caught it, because I remember we did change that, but it, it looked into me. Um, and then just as a side note, everybody except for the top group, um, because there's no, nothing to work on right now, that includes last meeting, that started right away, so we're digging right in. Um, so, our Superintendent of Schools search, Mr. Wilbur took the time to comb through the community feedback, and he's going to summarize it for us. He did a fantastic job, they were wonderful, um, comments, very insightful, thank you to anyone who filled that out for us, it was truly helpful, and you had a lot of great ideas. So, Mr. Wilbur.
And Carol looked at this as I handed to her popping, and said, you're going to ask me all these questions, well, four hundred questions on this, I think you already saw that.
I was assuming to think when you were pulling off a meeting, you were that we really would.
Question number one, so, and I talked to a couple of you one off, I, I think it's incredibly, um, So, and I talked to a couple of you one off, I think it's incredibly, um, nice to see the community you responded in this way to this request, that we created this open-ended questions to respond to. Um, we got a hundred and twelve responses, a strong number of them from DES to Honto in particular, and a number of teachers and staff who also participated. Uh, many of those honestly, many of them did chair who they were and, you know, were, were willing to do that. The three questions we asked were, what do you think are the top three district priorities for the next superintendent you address? What qualities or experiences are important to seek in the next superintendent? And what questions would members of the community most like a candidate to answer? So, the document in front of you here summarizes number one, number two, which I thought was a little relevant to tonight's interview. Number two, which is what are we looking for in the next superintendent, what qualities are we looking for? Probably is more relevant to an actual discussion of whether to appoint someone. Because tonight we're not doing that, we're simply interviewing the candidate. So, what you'll see as you go through this, the second page summarizes similar results across the first question. That first question was about top priorities and I put in parentheses about how many times a certain topic was mentioned by somebody. So, you'll see that the two most common areas that people mentioned were recruiting, retaining, and developing exceptional people for the district and academics and student success, those were far and above, or far and away the most common areas where people wanted to have us think about when it comes to the next superintendent. A third one, a closer, was around communication, culture, and community engagement. And so there's some examples there, I quoted, you all have full access to all these results, but I quoted some kind of representative examples of what people did have to say in those areas. And then four and five, also with over twenty, um, mode responses there. You've got a budget, answering the resources as well as helping levels. And then you'll see at the bottom, some other areas that came up, uh, safety, equity, inclusion, fully in harassment, and technology. So, we've got a sense as to what people are most concerned with or interested in seeing as we move forward. And then the other six pages are all the questions, people suggest, five pages, people suggest and we ask. And so those questions are bucketed into some different areas, school climate and culture aligned with what we saw as areas of focus, communication, community engagement, student outcomes, a lot of questions about leadership style, leading the style, roles and plans for the district, um, budget facility, safety, health and wellness, equity, diversity, inclusion, inclusivity, and also questions about taking into these past experiences, and there's some other questions that have been mentioned, we didn't get any of those. But, um, we certainly have been around questions to ask, so I think that'll help us a little bit, but at the same time, we're in a way, you know, bound to just ask these questions, we choose to go and tell the truth. So, I hope it's helpful for everyone tonight, I think we really owe Dad and Brad, you know, for helping people really did put thought into this, you know. I would say of all the feedback being collected via surveys from parents in the community over the last, my last year at school committee, I found this is really helpful and I think we opened it into teacher, but it's probably hard why we had to actually type words to make sense. So. There you go. Thanks, Mark.
Can you please send me a copy for the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Did anyone want to start by asking their own question?
Do you want to?
I mean, there's, these are great, they're wonderful, go ahead, Mike.
You, I'm sorry, what? I was just wondering, do you want to start something opening today from her or anything?
Oh, yeah, that's actually pretty cool. Do you have anything that you want to present to us here? I love it, it's really good.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm excited and I'm honored to be here this evening to, to interview the position superintendent for the role in the whole school district. You know that I'm a passionate educator and I've been in this district for fifteen years. I care very deeply, I want the school committee to know that, and also the families at home and the teachers have found that children in this district have put a lot of time and energy into, into making this their best possible educational experience for those children, for their families, and for the community, and for the staff. So I feel like I've worked very hard on those pieces, I think I've watched children go from kindergarten and grow up in a more adult school and watch them play graduation day. So, I have that kind of background and I feel part of this community, more so than the town I live in. This is the community and the town I live in. I've spent a lot of years building relationships with staff members in all three buildings, with the parents of the children here. I know many of you, I know many of the community members that have worked with on various committees, um, certainly the place department, the fire departments, farming community folks, businesses, probably anybody who's in this, even, even Boylston Deli folks and all of those other people who aren't usually regularly a visitor there. But I, I, I take very seriously this position, I take very seriously who I am as an educator, what I can bring to the table. I'm a parent. I am a parent of five boys. I ended, I have just added three more children to our family and I have ten grandchildren. You know, so if these children were in my school, in my district, I would want them to have a very good education possible because I'm watching my children try to find places to live with their families that are affordable and great school systems. I feel for them because I know that, I know what that's like if they're trying to pick a place where they can raise their children, have a good education. And a number of them are educators themselves. So, I understand that piece of parents who they care about, and I think that I can speak to that because they're trying to be supportive of them and what your parents are thinking about these today. Staff relationships, definitely have built those through the years, I can feel that the staff, they talk to me about many questions that they have, we work together on committees, and we work together to support their role as educators. And so I know all of them, custodians, cafeteria workers, they're part of my daily life in the buildings and I spend time with them. And so I think I know them and they know me, probably even tonight as I'm here, in a very different way, a personal and a professional way. I can try to make those connections. I want to talk to you about experience and expertise in the field. So, in addition to this role in assistant superintendent, backing up, I was a teacher first. I have been a teacher for a number of years in various grade levels, I taught first, sixth grade, fourth grade. So I spent time doing that work, I was a curriculum specialist, I moved into assistant principal position in another district. And then I came over here as a principal and enrolled in Royal School, then I became a curriculum director, and now assistant superintendent. I, I serve on a number of Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent committees, have been involved in a number of seminars, leadership trainings with them, leadership trainings. I'm a mentor to assistant superintendents who are coming in, who was invited to do that, which was an honor for me to consider before they held mentoring to people coming into a position similar to mine. So, that in my second year on the network. I'm also part of a think tank across the state for GS twenty-one. This is a group of superintendents and assistant superintendents who are here with me to discuss our place as educators and educational institutions globally. So that we're thinking not only of what's going on in Massachusetts, about how our children, how our students will move into their world, where they're going to live. And also looking at what's happening in other countries and how they may be doing things better. Several years ago, I had to use a travel program, and I am going to look at your educational systems with a cohort of other educators and we learned a great deal about how educators successful in training and how, how they educate children that we can learn from. So, that's part of some of the other work I do. And I also, I'm a teacher of teachers, I work in classes for educational services, I work with new teachers coming in about curriculum and assessment. And I also teach aspiring teacher, principal, administrative leaders, and I work for the one in my mission culture in the school. So, that's my, that's my background as far as education. More than anything, I feel that I know my mission and culture of these two towns. I came here, I used to tell the story, I came here because I survived from bicycle rounds to Boilin, we said, and I thought, something's wrong in here, I have something I love about this small town. I grew up in a small town and I understand the importance of relationships in a small town because that's gotta happen first. Nothing else can take place. I've seen that over and over again with staff and building those relationships. And I can feel it in my community, like children, building relationships with them, and building relationships with families as well. So, I'm here tonight giving it my best and saying about me and what I represent and what I believe in. And I'm sort of, you know, I am ready to get around running, I don't know why, but I have to.
I have a question, first of all, thanks for taking the time to be here with us and opening yourself up to questions and letting us, it's maybe a little better and as well as the community of the country. Um, a number of folks from, from the community that responded to the surveys and others have asked questions about your vision for the school district. And so I thought I'd summarize those questions with, with, with my own. Um, if, if in fact you find yourself in a position of superintendent, could you share with us how you would prioritize items to start doing within the district, stop doing within the district, as well as continue doing?
So, I, I thought about that question, you know, what I'm thinking of, um, I would, I would probably start with stacking attention to the negativity. I think we have to move beyond that, I think we have to contrast the whys of that negativity to try to understand why, why that exists. But I also think if we spend the time focused on that, we're more than meaningful, we have to be able to take steps forward. We have to find our people to help us to join with us, even if it takes a lifetime to say, let's, let's get started with this one. The second part of that question is, is.
First up and continue.
Okay. So, I, I would, I would, I would do that, I would start doing, I want to get out. Usually my work is behind the scenes and it has been that way, but I want to start getting out more and be very visible in the community by being able to attend various functions, events, sports programs, things that are going on and happening with our students, PTO meetings that I have been at in the past, certainly in CPAC, or really getting a sense more so in those areas as well as outside in the community, because those folks are important to us. I think it's important to capitalize on the corporations we have in these towns and introduce ourselves there. We can, we can actually get funding from these individuals or these materials if we get out there and we introduce ourselves to these people. Um, I'm starting to do that work already. Um, and I think that we've also just introduced ourselves to seniors in our area, the council and the agent and other folks who, who may not have a chance to get to know me and what our school district recognizes. If they don't know us, don't understand who we are and what we're about, what our priorities are, when it comes to that town meeting, you're gonna rely on whether or not they're gonna support the needs that we have. And I think as we've talked about this, we have several weeks, years, we, we need to have a support from the community and the community. Continue doing, I, I want to continue building relationships. I want to continue building relationships with our staff, we want to continue building with our police and fire department, you know, one of the crisis partnerships that I had initiated several weeks ago, like inviting the police and fire departments who are in two towns to come here, and thus we have not had that experience before. We have links and bounds with the work we're doing right now. In fact, we're meeting on Thursday to continue to, to kind of tighten information around emergency planning, vaccination. And, and that has taken time to do because we have to go to trust among ourselves and know that we're in count on one another when, and if there are crises and other times when we need to call on one another for advice. So I want to continue building those relationships, exploring the rung of the town for two years, like the internship program at the high school, exploring the possibilities for funding, always looking out of that way. And, and I think just getting to know how to do better and to approach all of this through a different lens is the lead now in our system.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, I have several, but I'm gonna do one.
Here's to doing all these questions.
Okay, I'm very excited that you could potentially be the next superintendent. So, just saying. Um, so communication at the speech, because everybody goes to Honto, um, because they think I have a product in Brown and communication at Brown, which has always been great, and I would assume it's also related with elementary school. When we transition to Tejano, um, the general feel of the parent community is that communication just drops off despite the things that are just feels like the school doesn't want that parent support or you kind of elementary schools and, you know, everyone that we're all in, right? As a community, we build that relationship, when we come out, we don't have a sense of that accountability. Um, so my question would be, how would you, what sort of ideas would you have to create that relationship with the communities that the parent community feels that if the school wants to hear what they have to say, wants to, wants to evolve, and that the communication that that one is stronger?
I think there's two parts to that, I think first has to do with leadership and who we select as the leaders in those buildings, the principals, because the principals drive the culture in each of the buildings, it drives the culture of the whole district. It's my responsibility, you know, John, and he knows it because we have these deep conversations at times and difficult conversations. The superintendent drives the principals and what the expectations are in each of those towns. We feel that that's a priority, they need to know that, and they need to show evidence that that is, that is going to be the priority in that school. But I think it's also choosing the good leaders too, and having opportunities to look for individuals who will promote that and who will start to build that trust and, and ask of those teachers specific things like reaching out to one of its newsletters. And we've done a lot of work in our negotiations around parent conferences, we've been trying to break through, you know, found new avenues to do that. So I think it's around that leadership. The second piece, and I think that part of that is on a district level as well, is the communication piece that we're speaking of. Not just at the middle high school level, but all of the levels. There was a quote one time that struck me in my presentation that said, if we don't tell our story, someone else is gonna tell it for us. And that has always resonated with me because I think that's really true. What, why would we be on social media is the negativity because we're not out there promoting ourselves. This district is doing such wonderful things, we have staff that are doing, you just saw Lisa Saguero came a couple of weeks ago, right? To promote the workshops in biology, how often do we hear about that? Years ago, it used to happen, I was a grown-up principal, I think we're very different in that world. I used to bring in groups of students to do a little presentation every single time I had a grown-up school committee meeting. We may want to do something at least like that for a number of our meetings because teaching only see the children, the students or what they're doing, I think that's like, we all talk as adults, we all have our enough. They're doing amazing things and then we're like, oh, that's an idea, we obviously have their voices out here, so you can hear and see what they're doing. We have social media to our advantage through Twitter, through Facebook, which is just starting now, that we can promote. We have newsletters, we have blogs we can be doing. I think showing up at the table to these different events and honoring the work that teachers are doing with students when they have opportunities like exhibitions in the high school. I'd want to, I used to not get invited to the exhibitions, I think that people can think, I don't know why, I don't even wanna survive why I wasn't invited. I started going to test the leaders to official exhibitions, and if you kept not had a chance to go, these are the seniors, John's son was there. They take them right away. These students read a variety of books, they select the material they're going to read, and they take interpretations on specific themes. And they, they present that to the audience, they act it out, they discuss it, they take questions from the audience. Isn't this a college-level material for a member, and it blows me away every single time. But I look around the audience, it wouldn't be wonderful to invite the public. And some of our seniors from the senior center to come, nice to come and see what's going on. So I think we have to work on promoting ourselves and the good things that we do as well. Otherwise, we're radio silent and we're allowed in the community and the processes to the district, to the schools.
Carol, you've already answered all the questions that I had written down, so... I never thought I would ask this question, but do we have a diversity equity inclusion problem in this district?
Yeah, I would say we do.
Okay.
And it's so-so that we are first reaction. And we went to the administrative team, we don't have a problem with equity because we think of connect equity right away to racial equity. We absolutely have a compilation here of students who are elves or English learners, you know, or coming in from other countries. But it's not so visible. And what ends up happening with those students is a term for, I want to say, whiteness. They blend into their culture and they actually move their own culture because they try to become a pageant. You know, they try to fit in with the rules. You know, you see it. It's very subtle. So we're trying to raise awareness of that piece of the equity position. We also have to look at the socioeconomic level of our students, the opportunities that we have here to support those students. The equity initiative started several years ago based on the fact that students couldn't afford field trips. There were some of those that could and those that couldn't. And students who had come from families of money were able to go to very beautiful places to travel and educational experiences. They were even able to go on other types of field trips that were within the country because they had the funding to do it. The equity plan was designed originally to be thinking about how we're going to fund those opportunities for those children as well because that's a need to allow that. Opportunities and courses. There are students, and we may end special education with a little later, but I would say, they know our children. And if a student who does an IEP wants to take an IEP course or a course of rigor, even if it's an honors course, and they want to work at it, my God, could that give them an opportunity to do that? We all do, yes, to step up and give them a chance to at least take those courses. Even if they don't go through the test at the end, it'll be free time for you. So I think part of that is acceptance of the public. I want children to learn in school and we need to be where they're at. Special education now, near and dear to my heart, so I think talking about that too.
I remember that conversation we had last year in one of these meetings that the council held, the English learners and the financial challenges that they were facing, right? How that percentage has grown tremendously the past couple of years here for us. I think we had this conversation during our masking conversation that we brought up. So yeah, I think I agree with you. But setting all that aside, what is the one thing we can focus on right now as a district, as a committee? What would you tell us as a committee? Or one thing you would want to do to make this district improve, stand out, jump ahead, leap to the bottoms, go where it is now compared to, I think the other day we were talking about surrounding towns that some people may consider more desirable districts compared to? One thing that I'm doing now that we should focus on?
So we're in a period right now of transition. Jeff spoke about that. The principal spoke about that in the report. Changes in administration, changes in leadership and staffing. But I also think the bigger picture, this is going in a period of transformation. We're at a crossroads right now. And we can go forward and we can move ahead to greater things, to just greatness as a district. But we have to do that together. We're dealing with fraud dependent. And anybody who denies that has got londers on. We hear it across the nation. We hear it across the Commonwealth. We feel it in our district. So that is a period of time that's an opportunity for us to recruit again. One of the things I've been talking about with the administrators and I want to move forward with all of us is an initiative called the Portrait of a Graduate. Many high-level districts are taking part in this program. The program enables us to come together collectively as a community, not only just all of us, we would be involved, certainly all of our school committee members, parents, community members, to sit down and say, it's an initiative for a vision of what our district is. Because I need me to pockets of greatness. But I think we need to have an equity that says, this is where we want our children to be, running off out of Tohoto High School. This is what the skills and competencies we need to be able to have. And that we all have consensus around that. Because children may have a great idea, Mike might, John might, but it's great. But we're fragmented with that. We need to bring us together again and have those kind of discussions. And it's a systemic approach to doing this work. I've been looking at a consultant group that does this work in a very great way, who's going to be leading the administrative team just to give them an idea of what this is about, to explore some of the options, to talk about where we think we are right now. Because maybe to go forward, you gotta know where you are right now, right? We're in this world that have a different opinion of where we are. One thing we do know is that we're hurting around the pandemic. That I think that we can move into a way, I think we have a very potential. It's there. It's just hurting right now. I don't have any other way to say it. So I really want to move into that kind of approach and bring you into this.
Carol, on top of student behavior, social, emotional learning, I know you yourself took on lunch duty at Boylesville Elementary the last couple of weeks covering for the fact that we weren't a staff there. On that topic, especially at the elementary school level, we have students who either missed out on preschool experience altogether or had preschool kindergarten first bit experiences that were not what they were typically in the past. What can we be doing? And what would you want to see the district do to help young students who are struggling behaviorally with social, emotional types of things here at our teachers, starting now?
I think that, I was glad that John spoke about those students coming in knowing exactly what they should do in his school because I think we're starting to speak to things several hundred years ago. As far as students getting back into the teens and expectations. But I think we have to continue to, they may reset the expectations, whether it's in the elementary schools, when the teachers are on the same page with the principal there, the children know what the expectations are. When they have expectations, they're still safe. They feel such a structure as a good thing because it does make them know, I'm going to be okay, and I know, I know what I need to do. People, they don't have a big concern. And that's what those children miss who started, who didn't get preschool. We have them in some of the acceleration academy. We had forty-something preschool students coming into that acceleration academy that year just to do the social emotional work because they didn't know what was going to be in the classroom. So I think putting that in place, setting the expectations, reinforcing those expectations is one piece. I think we need to continue to work hard on the social emotional piece to what curriculum that we have and the role in parents, like parents' role in community. Actual curriculum for the elementary schools, keep them fine, that the teachers implement in each of their classrooms, where there's a set of rules or expectations for the classroom. They meet in morning meetings, class meetings, where they discuss issues and topics and how they interact with one another. And they speak the same language, the language carries through. I think we're also putting resources in place right now. We're having adjustment counselor for us in elementary school. That's been huge. Our school psychologist, he's been doing a lot of work with our children in the middle high school. We're adding school adjustment counselors, restructured the counseling department so that we have somebody now dedicated specifically to the middle school. And he and I, we work on options in the social emotional curriculum. We can actually get them to teach in the classroom. And Sally and Carrie have done a fantastic job of building that expectation around that kindness piece, kindness for everybody. And I think that's going to take us a long way to get their honesty and future back. And I also think there's a piece of this that says to me as a parent, we want the expectations of our children. And if you don't think that they're watching, are you paying attention to what I wrote? Are you listening to what we say at home? I gotta tell you, as a mom who's had that, I'm still reminded now, thirty years later, of things I said when they were eight years old. Remember when you said, this is what this is, and I, they were watching us. And I think that's a huge piece too. It's, you're still, you're still at home in high schools. So I think that we will be seeing those positive ones and reach out to them. And let them know we care about them too, and we want to help them. The other thing is, I just wanted to mention, they've put a place last year with a bright program at the high school. Students who are coming in and transitioning from mental health facility to hospitals used to go right back into the classroom again. That was, imagine. Now they're offered a transition program to make you come in and they can walk their way back in the food adjustment program. So they have a specific paraprofessional working with those students so that when they feel ready, as they feel ready to go back into different classes, they'll transition back in there. So that we are not, we feel safe doing that.
So I feel like one of the things that many people ask, but also many people have been talking about is staff, right? Teachers, you know, support staff. So what do you think are the two, one or two most important things to, number one, hire great staff? And number two, retain those staff? I was listening to John talk about the teachers in Berlin and how some of them have been there for years doing the same job, and they're not going anywhere. And then we look at DES, and we've had a ton of burnout. So what do you think are the one or two most important things that you, as the superintendent, need to do to get good people that will stay?
I think providing them with good mentors. We have a mentorship program here. I think that the people who we select for mentors are committed to growing relationships. They spend a lot of time, they're required by the testing to have. And I think those people who step up to do that role are critical in maintaining new staff and helping them to feel comfortable in the school and feel valued. I think it's my role as superintendent to touch base with those individuals and make sure they have what they need for the way they're pitched. And then they don't feel isolated. They feel part of the community, part of the culture. And then they understand what our culture is and what our expectations are. I think that mentoring those teachers is a real commitment. I also think that we perhaps take, I think, under value, maybe that's not the right word. I think we take for granted that the people who have been here for a while have done really wonderful things. We spend a lot of time and energy and fortunates in the chair of the principals to evaluate and to watch for folks who should not be, for whatever reason, cannot be teaching. And they do a good job of that. But I think that we need to promote excellence in those teachers who have been here for a while and know their opportunities to become leaders, whether they're leaders in departments or leaders in sports or coming forward to bring their case apart and use it and being able to really flourish in your education. We have a number of people, and again, we don't hear about them. What are going for their doctorate program, or their cans? Or their masters in administration? They're out there. And I get, between them, I get a lot of correspondence with them because they're looking for data, information for their courses. They're looking, they have certain needs. And I think it's our job, it's my job to make sure that they can get what they need and get the new opportunities for teaching.
So actually, you just brought the great point because I know my son's first grade teacher was going for her masters. And we didn't know the whole year, but over the summer she was doing was a research project that she reached out to the parents. And I was just like, wow, you're doing all that and trying to get a masters? I think maybe it would be, you know, just a thought, I don't know, informative, but the school committee, maybe we could, you know, have an update or, you know, not like a spotlight, you know? Not to like try to make people feel bad, but to like, like you said, focusing on the positive. You know, maybe like once every couple of months or once a year, look at these teachers who are doing, you know, this one's going for a doctor, this one's going for a masters, kind of make the school committee aware, you know? So at least we know the names.
And I don't think, I don't, I don't, I don't, to discuss the excellence of one particular school, there were a lot of factors around that particular issue. It was like a perfect storm of things happening. Some of those folks went out to ministry of positions. And I actually worked with them as they completed their, oh my gosh, what do they call them now? Trying to look at this call of thanks. They have to complete certain levels of competency in order to go get their ministry of access now. And I would work with them on that. So I'm very proud of them that they got these positions. I would never hold them back. I always want to encourage them to go. Some folks were just looking for other opportunities. They have that through the other center. Somebody who's a bigger district, a more challenging district, or is moving away, you know, who's getting married or doesn't want to teach anymore. But this happened to be a perfect storm of things happening. So we don't think it was a point for children to just want to be.
I agree. Carol, I'm really glad that you're willing to do this and I'm really excited. Your intro left me with all my questions gone. But I did want to comment, you know, during the associations, we had the opportunity to see how you've interacted with the teachers. And, you know, when you walk into a building or a house, you walk in, you can feel a feeling there. You can feel happiness. You can feel heaviness. How are you going to, how do you see yourself working with the teachers? To try to build up, you know, COVID took, it beat them down. They're exhausted, you know, morale is, you know, across, not just our district, everywhere. It's low. I know that you have a wonderful relationship, you know, a very respectful relationship where they listen to you and listen to them. I'm just curious if you have any visions for what you might do to help build them up and strengthen them, like even the cultures in the schools? Just to bring more happiness and joy.
We had, during COVID in particular, because I was working with the association, I was taking a lot of information about what the teachers were asking for. And so we tried to provide them opportunities for some social emotional support for the youngest teachers. They know that the principals were very, often very hard to give them breaks in time to recruit and how, from the challenges of teaching online and then working in these highway models. So giving them some slack time, again, like I've had, certainly in the training and professional training. We brought in mass partnership for you and that is mobilization with deals with workshops for teachers on anything from trauma, both their own trauma, wellness, opportunities for them to be able to learn from and also to recognize active strategies in their classroom. But honestly, I think the strongest way to do that is with personal one-to-one relationships that I go with those teachers. I do a lot with the professional piece, but I also am involved with them in a personal way. I know what's going on in their lives. They talk to me about some of the things that are happening. And I think reaching them in that way and a little smaller way and for best communication. Getting back to them too, on things that they want to do and things that they're asking me for is respectful. And it shows that I don't just say I'm going to do something and make sure I do it for them. But I think we also have to continue to bring them in the practical area and the center of community and give them opportunities to do social and things. And I remind you again, principals could do that. You also can, we should be talking about, and we do talk about, how is this going to, how's that going, what are you doing with these students? Or where those teachers are.
Thank you. I appreciate it in the background of the school. And it's just, I think one of the, one of your, you have so many strong, there's so many strong points and strong things about you, but you just have that nice relationship with them. And I think right now, where we are in the world, it's really important that whoever comes in and takes over is able to work with that and create these relationships. And what I like about the idea of you are coming in is that you already have established that. And the nice rapport with them, there's mutual respect. And the nice rapport with them, there's mutual respect and understanding. And just hearing a lot of the things that you were doing to support them and the rest of the relationships, I think it's just wonderful.
I look, so two things about that, I look at that as a mess. So it's the team, and I don't take the credit for that, I'm part of that work that we're doing and we do that together. So, and I think, I think we have other ideas that, teachers are not, they don't always love me now. You know, I recognize that. It's not like we're just a big love fest here and everybody gets it. Because my eye on each other, they get mad at me, you know, I make them do things right now, I'll tell you, I go through this all the time. But in the end, I do think, I'm trying to understand why these things are unimportant to do. And I mean, just like working with family, just like working with the kids, the teachers have to understand why we're asking them to learn what they need to learn to be able to teach. Why are we learning about foundations? Why are we doing these new resources, programs and things, teaching them about these spaces? Why are we asking them about new math concepts and skills? We have, Joey Thorne, I spoke about that last year. We're changing when we teach mathematics. Teachers have to know that they have to be current. So sometimes when I ask them to make that change, it's, it's a struggle. And sometimes there are a few areas struggle. So, but I stick with it and we stick with it. And I think then they start to realize that we see the value of it. Best way that they learn to do that is when the teachers come on, I think, and we should, we're making those changes, because they finally understand, I get this now.
I have another question. It's a great answer. Okay, extra for good activities and drama. So, you know, we own the high school and there was so much available, certainly drama, drama club for the high school students. And all my kids play sports and I am pro sports. And I can do a really great job in the district of sporting, the other team. But I'm not so sure that we can nail it on. So can you speak to what you mean by superintendent help from other times, those areas?
Yeah, this is like my favorite topic to talk about, because I'm hot on this one. So, you know, a while ago, there was a report, I remember, my group were bringing this up, I think it was like sixty-five percent, we have sixty-five percent score on our arts and writing. And I'm thinking, well, we're great at sports, I mean, we have that. These are, this has certainly been a sports-supported communities. People are very invested, families are very invested in sports. But we're not addressing students who are in the arts, who are interested in the arts. And or any other topics, because we don't have, we don't have that extra school, extracurricular activities after school. We run clubs during the day, they happen a lot of times during lunchtime. In part to afford those students who are sports, who are sports players, to be able to go to those meetings and then start their sports practice right after school. I'd love to work with our athletic directors, coaches and principals to make some adjustments in those times so that students who might stay after the club activities or art or the music program, or get into a jazz program, whatever they want to do. Some kind of club organization, moderate UN, after school, they can do that. Because they can't, they don't have the pick and choose, they can't do that after school because I'm in the sports program. I don't want to get rid of the sports program, but I want to expand that because they're all of value. Not only can they play sports. And I don't want to take that away from the sports program. I'd like to build some other sports, I'd love to have a cross here at the school. There's sports that I'd like to bring in. But I think we have to open up after school activities. I've been talking with teachers who are asking numerous, for numerous reasons, would you please have an after school help, help center? And if students need additional support? If you don't have any after school buses, how is that equitable? If you can't go home, your mother and father can't pick you up at after school, so you don't stay at the school? This goes back to, I think, your question about the social emotional piece here. We all have to feel part of the one in some ways. I was reading a book, a gentleman wrote the book, because he gave it to me, it was a second, right? Where they talked about, everybody wants to feel part of the tribe, the community. The disconnect, the depression, the anxiety starts when we don't feel like we're all in this. That was part of having a corporate, right? We all became disconnected from each other, people aren't supposed to be social beings. We have students here who are in a connection with somebody or some bodies. Other friends who have a like mind, right? To be able to get into, who love and are passionate about music or art. But teachers don't have that and they want that opportunity to teach and do that work after school or expand that opportunity. I think that that would be, that's one of the areas I want to do. I want to get passionate about it. So I would want to.
So why don't we do some of this stuff now? Is it money? Is it, you just mentioned buses, so obviously, or it's like sports? So it's all because of sports or is it just because we don't have staff?
I think it's a culture that's been created over time. I think it's been trying, I think it's been trying to find ways to have clubs. But looking for cultures where people can be here and have the staff and which are right from, from the teaching right into the coaching position. And if they're available to do that, that's part of it. So I think, and I think that it's, it's just that of a culture that we work here. We don't have a lot. We now have, should be adding two, two days of after school, or two days in the church. I haven't had a chance, this is coming up, it's how we've got to start again. But then the buses, the buses show up and the kids are there because there's nothing going on, why do the buses show up?
Yeah.
What about buses for kids who are in sports? After school buses for kids who are in sports and are staying late? We always have this, we always have this, and think about your communities, you go up in the bus, right?
Late bus. There was a late bus and, yeah, there were two late buses.
They're in the dark to drop your kids off, right? At the bus stop.
Yeah, for high school. Yeah, there was a late bus, an after school bus. So we do not have ones?
We don't have them. I want to consider all this, so we're just, student government, you know? Whatever they want to do.
I think that's what the world's aim is, providing them, all the kids, all the opportunities.
It sends me when I walk into the building and it's lit, I'm like, is this a high school? You know, it's a, there should be buses.
At the same time, we have five hundred and some odd students in the school. And we're never going to be able to offer the wide variety of courses or opportunities that Shrewsbury High School offers, for example. And I mention that because one of the items of our dentistry is the program studies in Tejano. And I commented during the student success meeting about the fact that we offer two foreign languages here at Tejano, Spanish and French. I went on to choose various program studies, it's a page full of foreign languages, Mandarin, Latin, all kinds of options. How do we, as a high school, provide perhaps different opportunities? And what do we provide to students that makes up for the fact that they're not going to have that variety of options that they might have in a bigger high school? What do they get here and how can we enhance that? So that people don't graduate doing what they missed out on their opportunities that they had in a bigger school.
Yeah. That ties into what she said about the extra perks.
It does tie into that. It ties into some of those, for example, I think two of our teachers are moving forward with it. Under the auspices of the Girls Who Code organization, they're offering additional coding opportunities for students who are interested, boys and girls. And they're going to be starting that program after school this year, so I'm excited about that. We have opportunities for students to take courses online. We pay for that right now, we have a program called VHS. And we use that to be able to allow students to pay close to the building and how we're going to afford it. I, I see us expanding into opportunities to take courses in college. We talked about that, I think I shared that in the report last year. We have local colleges, they're offering times for our students to go and to of course work there as well. Early kind of involvement opportunity where they get the credit and they can have users there in the future or feel opportunities in the schools. So that's another way that they can get their kinds of courses and opportunities. I think that we can do some co, some co-teaching models. And we're combining a lot of the type of courses that throw other opportunities where teachers have opportunities and don't get to teach that course. One of the areas that we love to see, we have now this environment for science. We have the teachers, we have the managers, we like to teach this. It just isn't a matter of taking more personnel in here because she can't do all of the courses she's teaching in terms of.
So the best part, you mentioned personnel, which in my, the school committee of mine gives budget. And as we look at some of the challenges we have across the district, I would certainly point to the school committee and the budget or the like thereof as our biggest challenge right now in this district. We can't, no matter how much money we have, we're probably not going to offer two different levels of the enter in Chinese in Tejano. However, as we think about advocating in our role as the school committee, but it's one of our three perfs. How do you see yourself as the potential superintendent, playing a role in that process and helping us advocate for the budget we need to do the things we don't want to see happen?
I think that's a multifaceted question. I think first of all, there's on travel, the superintendent, the board, the primary officers, the school district chairman, they all need right now what they've been collecting information from staff as far as curriculum material, personnel we need to have in place, other resources that we need. Certainly, we need, the school adjustment council has pushed on that, it was your, you just described, we need that position to come in. So I think it's imperative for that, for the superintendent to be able to, to look through and prioritize and make recommendations to the superintendent that we're hoping to be right now. But I also think we have to work in partnership to get out there early and talk to the community about the needs that we have. I think a lot of times, again, goes back to the why, they don't know until November, December, January. I feel we should make people go out there, we know they're going to speak to these students in various groups, we have meetings, gatherings, here, wherever we need, forums that we have to talk about some issues that we're facing. It was kind of that kind of problem we have, we have to strength that and make them go, also to call accounts. You know, I, I'm not afraid to be a strong mother kid, or a child. And I think going to the channels and talking to them so that they're aware of what we need, what we need is going to be key and critical. We can't, we can't put everything into the pot in one meal and say, okay, this is all of the things we need, but we can prioritize and put it into a sensible plan so that we ensure that we're going to get those needs met over a period of time. That's, that's part of our theory. It's a skeleton model, it does take into consideration a lot of these things.
I think for me, that answer in that topic is probably the biggest strength I see in your candidacy for the role. In that you understand where we are today and what we could do to rapidly improve outcomes in the district. And having someone who's knowledgeable in our district, able to be side by side with six of us, none of whom I think are scared to do the same thing you said, go out there and do it.
No, definitely not. Well, it's funny because I was, you know, when I talked in the past about the kid in the classroom, I would provide one in the classroom. Now that the thing is now, I'm already in the office, oh my gosh. Yeah, no, I believe that's what we need.
I'm not a lot of good, it's my last.
As long as it's okay.
A bunch of more. So the middle school at Tejano, what would you, what is your vision for the restructuring there? What would that look like?
Yeah. Jeff and I have talked so much about this restructuring, I do absolutely support the idea of bringing in the ministry work. Whether we do this as a model of one principal and two assistant principals, one at the middle school, one at the high school, with the ideal, where we have one principal in the middle school, one principal in the high school. And the high school, we talked about that model as well. But I think I would go with, if we can ensure and set the definition of those job descriptions so that the two assistant principals handle specific duties, handle discipline, handle scheduling, handle, they'll be doing evaluations as well, handling kind of the day-to-day operations of the, of the school. We're going to take a lot of luck with that principal who spent enormous amounts of time on topics and things that she should not be having, firstly, not having a good deal with, but not having to be in the trenches doing. I think they should be knowing what's going on, I don't think, I think they have to have those conversations with their team. But that person should always be the instructional leader in the building. And that person should be the one guiding some of these initiatives or putting in place, thinking about, thinking with me, what are we informing? What do we need to have in care of? How can we then let's see what's going on in this classroom and do things, watch this, and then discussing the teachers who are there, what they're doing and the curriculum, the teaching material that they're using. And how they're treating this group as well. As far as, I don't know, they're providing. So I think that, I think I would go with that structure. Probably do some searching around to some of the districts outside and see how we look at, you know, what we do, you know? Originally, when the school was built, I was so, I was part, as a grown principal, on developing a middle school model. And I spent a lot of time with some of the teachers who are still there now, creating one that the vision of that model would look like. And then we didn't have the funds to bring in even a second, you know, third person to come as a principal or a minister. But we wanted to, at the time, it was a separate middle school and all of the teachers in the separate, the, the, the. The challenge, the challenges we have now is the crossover, crossover still, so it creates scheduling tensions. So again, neither we have those for teachers, these for teachers. Is that something you would ultimately move toward? I might explore, perhaps, I would very much like to. I think it's very hard for the teachers to.
True, she can handle that.
She sure does.
I can hear you.
I can hear you, Jeff.
Carol, even though they, we're, we're hiring CEOs, right? We're tired of CEO to run the district. The box office really is the CEO when it comes time to do that. I think about, I think you've worked with how many superintendents have you been here?
Six.
So six superintendents in how many years?
This is my fifteenth year, so two of them are interns, so I have, well, one I had for a year when I had.
And prior to that, when you were in Shrewsbury, other superintendents and principals? We've worked with a number of educators in your career. As you think about the different administrators you've worked with and the years you've reported into, are there any specific things you would take away from their styles and do similarly? Or any things you would try to do differently than what you may have seen some of those other leaders do? And I specifically think about, you know, you're very friendly and personally a nice person. But there are times when the superintendent is going to need to put their foot down for the fist bump table in certain situations. So, you know, how would you evolve yourself as a leader over that period of time? And how would you take in learning the way things superintendent do?
So.
Not just Jeff.
And that will be, you know, a couple of things, so.
That's one thing.
Be afraid, be very.
We never share a story.
I have, I have taken a lot of lessons from watching the superintendents and, and valued what I've learned from them, the positives and negatives of these individuals. For all humans, you know, all of us have strengths and our weaknesses, styles that are definitely different than my style. And I'm very different, I'm very different from Jeff. And that's one of the things that's made us work together, I think, well, because we see things from different perspectives. And we're not afraid to go after things that we believe in with each other. And I think, you know, they both laugh because they hurt, I'm not always nice. They cry when they, no, they see a look in my face and they're like, you better go. Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm only one person. And so I think that the qualities I've taken, I think that stand out to me the most on respect from the. from individuals, all individuals, children, parents, teachers, everyone, everyone, we have to be respectful to one another, you have to be fair to people. We have to do what we say we're going to do. And I think we have to be good listeners. I think we have to be able to hear what people are saying and make informed decisions. Sometimes I'm going to have to make a quick decision. Jeff made a million quick decisions.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you can't wait around sometimes to decide what you're going to do. You have to have those signs before you have to do that. And that's why, that's scary, because you're on your own with those. I feel like everyone experiences the deal that we have at this point, or I would, you know, I would certainly want that if I'm somebody like Jeff or somebody who has other folks that I'm close with in leadership positions. And then sometimes you can be retarded. Sometimes you can get a lot of feedback from young people and collectively get their own wheels and have their own decisions.
Your job in your career?
Jeff, Jeff. That was, you did so good. That was like so much pressure. It was like an hour. Yeah, seriously. At the end of the day, I wish you worked all that. I think that was great. Thank you. That was.
Well, he really came to a good ear.
More, can you give us to establish this process and your return of your search?
Yep, so we just interviewed Carol tonight. And we're going to have a meeting on September twenty seventh, which is two weeks from today, it is Tuesday. And at that meeting, we will vote to appoint Carol to take over as superintendent upon the retirement of Mr. Zany. And then we will go into executive session to discuss contract. And in between, you know, we're, we're looking to the community to give us their feedback and to let us know how they feel and if there are questions that they feel we should have answered. We absolutely welcome those. We're, we're gonna.
I was going to suggest to you, if you want to put something out there to the community, we can certainly share where people can watch this on demand if they weren't able to do it live and perhaps invite people to provide, open, open any comments on Carol's candidacy and for us to consider to be with yours in that discussion.
I'd get, that was, I do, in the placement page.
Yeah.
Jeff, are you doing an email on this project this few weeks ago? There's like a part of it, if we can put something in there to.
Thank you for offering this chance to speak to me. I appreciate it. You know, he is a term of education officer of leadership. And I feel that that's who I am to this district. And I've been there for a long time and I hope to do that. So I, I just want to offer that to you. I'm looking forward to setting one up that's, that's exciting insurance. I use that word transformative, you know, because I really thank you for your work. Now we've come out of this very, very hey. And I'm confident that maybe I better do this. I hope you believe that five years, we've got a great team to do it.
I'm excited that you want the job, to be honest. I'm already very comfortable, so, thank you. And let's do some subcommittee reports. There are a few things left. I'm going to appoint the following members as chairs to their subcommittees and as such, they will be providing an update on the subcommittee that they represent. So Mr. Wilder, I'm going to appoint you to be the chair of the budget facilities and safety subcommittee. Would you like to give your report at this time?
Sure.
And Sril, you're on deck.
So the budget, financing, safety, or the budget, facilities and safety subcommittee met on, for this particular day in this community's office and discussed a number of items. We overviewed and looked at the district's funding sources to get myself, Megan, and you a better understanding of where the money comes from, I know some work goes. Time that I think was really valuable for all of us to dig into and understand the district budget and how it comes to be and where the thing fits. We also looked at a preliminary list of other districts that we want to understand where we are benchmarked for non-union personnel salaries. So specifically, we're hiring superintendent, there's some assistant superintendent, there's some substitute teachers and other central office staff to understand where we are compared to neighboring districts. And we need to do a job to be missing that initial information and going on to get more for us from the town meeting we're going to have. We initially looked at the timeline for the appointment of a budget process and talked about the timing of that along with the input, the approval of the district funding plan and how we're thinking to kind of fit together. Talked about the OPEC, OPEC funding plan for the district and Megan's going to look a little more closely at some of the factors of how they all kind of seem to be, what some of our officers might either help fund that liability. And also looked at the contract to the districts of this legal council and reviewed service offerings from other law firms as we consider whether to continue our existing council or potentially consider others. So we met for all the drawings in the agency office and we gave them that was great. And I do want to also ask Megan to speak to some facilities concerns we have with the EES in particular and let her speak to that.
So I'm going to start by saying, this morning when I told my kids it was picture day and it was raining and my kindergarten daughter said to me, well, where are we going to do pictures? And I said, well, we're going to, you're probably going to do it in the gym. And she goes, well, she goes, well, the rules of the gym are you can't touch the buckets of water and if a ball goes in a bucket of water, you have to tell the teacher. And I said, what are you talking about? And I went to the school and I saw that the roof is leaking in the gym and in the library. So Mike, right, Mike? Mike, okay. Yep, he took me around and he said that actually they've patched it so many times, the people have had to have told them they probably need the roof. So I think that, we talked about this loosely, but I think that we need to find the money to do a facility study on that building like ASAP. You know, the roof, the building is like, it was like ninety degrees in the heat. And the way that, the way the sun hits the building, you know, with the flat roof, the air conditioning in the library is broken. It was about eighty-seven degrees in the library. It was eighty-six or eighty-seven the day we were in the building. I mean, huge impairments in learning when gym class is about avoiding the buckets of water and the library is just about surviving instead of like actually enjoying books because it's so hot. So, you know, I don't know if that's something we need to vote on.
When we had a budget subcommittee move on back in June before you left, we talked about the facilities that we had.
Yeah, we're going to do another one.
So we are going to do one. All right.
What's the timing?
Yeah. That would be something we can do before we are working on the budget so that we can, you know, if we need a new roof, that's a huge thing to budget for. So it would be helpful if we could have it done, you know, I'd say before the end of the calendar year, right?
Is that, do you mean?
I mean, it's a lot, yeah.
Suggesting was for a subcommittee, if there was one, and ask for the funding.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to have that, that requires a bid process for it, so it's.
It's not capital?
No, it's, well, yeah, what's in it might be capital, you know, stuff, but there's a bid, the bid process to do the audits. So.
We don't know if they're going to have a special town meeting, so if that doesn't happen.
We don't, we don't even know, so it's going, you know, be, I'll talk to Nancy about it.
What I was going to suggest we do tonight would be take this topic and for the school committee to empower the budget, subcommittee to follow up on this, going so far as to request an advocacy improvement funding board if we need to. So in order to give us a motion to authorize the budget to so the security committee to work with the administration to request the polls and higher form of the conducted facilities assessment of EES into expand, if you consider it twenty-five thousand or BMS or up to thirty thousand to conduct it, so we can take it into the subcommittee to further discuss. Where I'm going to have to do it here. So my motion is for this school committee to give the subcommittee authorization to move forward with that and to spend up to thirty thousand, working with the administration to do that.
I'll get this started.
Do you need a second for that motion then? I have a second.
We have a, a discussion.
And the thirty thousand for the assessment? It was twenty-five to the assessment of BMS, so I'm just putting inflation on there, should.
It's a big, it's a big facility to, you mentioned that from the audit, but.
Is that, just to provide your point.
Well, my.
Thank you.
It's probably like real.
The audit will comment. It's like, it's an engineer, so they comment that they, and they prioritize it too, so they all have level one, level two, level three priorities. And then if you have something like air conditioning, for example, that's obviously not in the audit because it doesn't exist in the school. So that's something you would consider.
Preparation, maybe.
And we also, we've started that process. The air conditioning.
Yeah, right. So I knew you got some bids, yep, yeah.
What about you with that? From one of the, whether it's school choice fund, or EES, or other, I would, I'm suggesting that we just hand that off to the subcommittee to ensure it's forwarded yesterday.
And I mean, maybe the town would have to kick in because I think we've thrown the idea around it as a town building, I don't know if that works.
Is that, is that, is that my assessment that's done periodically? I wouldn't know, you know, just like.
I don't think it's been done.
It's not a BMS?
It's not a BMS. I don't think there's been.
It's a great in school.
Just issues with starting the scene in school.
Wasn't the roof good?
Well, yeah, well, it started with the, 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 the gym over the stage.
That's right.
So that was a capital, that was a, that was a big capital item. But it started with that piece. But that has, it has a number of little issues going on and the teachers, there's a mold issue in the building that teachers complain about, so there was some ongoing issues at the beginning and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I, last year, my son told me there were mice in his classroom. Twice. They were sitting on a rug and a mouse ran across them on the table. Twice it happened. I mean, they're first graders, so they think it's cool, but I was that teacher.
You can just say there's never one.
My, my, my motivation doing this is budget timing and if there's an opportunity to get the assessment done this off, it will allow us to put that into a budget request and those to, for some time in the year. And I'd rather do that than wait to get the funding for this assessment and then go be in there later. We have a roof, a roof on a gym that can potentially have two or four, that could be massively expensive to. So if you like.
Yeah, I took some pictures. They have buckets in the library lined with paper towels, but the library ceiling is destroyed. The gym thinks it's coming in from, coming in from the ducts. So then you talk about mold while the water's getting into the ducts, you have no idea. So I just, I echo what Adam said. I feel like there is urgency to get this done ASAP because we don't want to wait a whole other year if there are certain capital improvements that need to be done. And I think from what Adam and I heard and Laurie heard in the town of Boylston, we have people, we have parents that are willing to go to town meeting and fight to get some more money for the school.
It's shocking to me that we have kids in school trying to learn while dodging rain. You talked about technically bringing rainforest, what's what is it realistic to think that we will get engineering study done and all, you could select somebody that can do it. I mean, I just I guess I'm going to do a couple houses today because.
Yeah, I mean, the other one took a good part of the spray because there's a big process. It depends what else they're doing.
I mean, I agree, I think.
You need a, you need a, you need a qualified engineering firm to come and do it and to try to get them in. And you have to bid on it. It's not like you have fifty kids.
Yeah, I agree, it's a huge priority. It's unfathomable that this is even happening. What we should probably manage in expectations is what can be done in reality.
We'll get it started. I mean, I don't have any answers.
Well, how long?
We'll get it started.
Who was here, I mean, were you here for the Berlin one? I would have sat on school committee for that. So how long?
It was done last year.
Oh, it was? So how long did that take? Is that what Steve was telling us about with like the, the HVAC stuff in that building, the heating thing? How long did they got the news? So how long would that study take? Furnace. Remember he showed us a little bit more of the furnace? How long did it take?
Furnace was before I was here.
Oh, that, that's not new.
The color furnace? That was part of the, that was part of, I don't know, the random green, that was about.
That was that was Lorian.
The Berlin facility assessment was completed, final report was delivered on May twenty, twenty twenty.
So that was before our time?
Before us.
Like, I do not remember that.
Yeah, it was only a two month start to finish.
No, that's what I'm asking. I don't know. What was it? That's what I'm saying. Was it, was it two months? Was it four months? Was it, I have no idea.
My point is I don't want to wait for a time to go back. I agree, start it today.
Start it now and get it in for February and budget grade is not. Yeah.
How long does, how long does the bid stay open?
Does it have to be open for a certain amount of time, Jeff?
Yeah, there is.
Right, you have to keep the bid open. Also, I wonder if we could just contact the people that did the Berlin one and see if they would do.
So right now, we're in the middle of a motion we have.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. But I'm just, I just wanted to remind us that we're in the middle of the motion to give the authorization, the school committee gives the subcommittee authorization to seek bids and perhaps spend up to thirty thousand dollars.
We can come up with a thirty-five because Jeff just let us know that the Boylston facility is significantly larger than Berlin. So you're suggesting an amendment to the motion.
I think we do probably as the committee for authorization.
All right, so we're going to leave it at thirty-five.
We're saying, we're seeking a front or a not bid.
We're, we're.
You have to get.
Right now, it's already to let them know.
Yeah, I think you have to get.
Committee is going to, the subcommittee will get one. You have to get this.
If the subcommittee is able to work with the administration, find receive bids and accept one, we're authorized to accept one up to thirty thousand dollars. It's more than that at this school meeting. For this authorization.
So we'll start looking at, Nancy will have some information later next time. Just do the initial work on it and so give you some more answers on that and the bid process.
Yeah, sounds great. All right, September twenty seventh, all right. Okay, so we should get a vote. So, yep, while in favor, aye.
What's the next one?
October sixth. October sixth.
Well, our next meeting is October sixth, but we have school committee meeting September twenty seventh, so Nancy has information for us to share at that date, right? I'd like to state that the motion for the school committee to give the budget subcommittee authorization to spend up to thirty thousand dollars in seeking bids for the facilities, the facility studying, has passed. Megan, did you want to, so I'm going to appoint Mrs. Rill to be the chair of the personnel negotiations and superintendent evaluation. Did you want to share? Because we weren't on camera last time, what we.
Yeah. Yeah, so the school committee voted the current contract in. So it took track immediately and.
It was unanimous?
It was a unanimous vote, yep, exactly. So the committee has not met since, because we don't have any upcoming contracts.
Thank you, Megan.
Is there a question in the subcommittee?
So we might have the superintendent one.
The school committee approves the BMDA contract, the department contract. We talked earlier, you say, we'll prepare the pressures. Is that the school committee too, or is that superintendent that deals with those?
We would recommend an increase that we're going to have. No, because it's not a, they don't, they, they don't bargain, it's not a, it's not a bargaining unit. So it's, it's, it's sort of a they'll come and negotiate with the superintendent. But if we want, if we wanted to change the, the status, we would come to, because it's a budget item, it affects the budget to say, we're recommending that all the steps increase by five percent.
So as a school committee, the only contracts, employment contracts, where do we? So as a school committee, the only contracts, employment contracts where you have orders to bring in in this school, in the.
Uh, and there's this management. And you technically deal with the assistant.
Sign up on those, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, for the policy and the school committee effectiveness, I'm going to inform myself as the chair. Uh, I'm going to give a policy update. Uh, we're gonna start with our COVID policy, which we reviewed, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Tomlin to speak to that.
Yeah, we, we reviewed the policy, BBCFA, and we had to have a time for both a first read and a vote. Uh, the only thing we changed in there is there was a line in the second paragraph. Line read vaccinations are the best protection as COVID en masse has one of the highest vax rates for young people and is nationally the top of all vaccinations. We discussed this. We didn't feel that this belonged to the policy any longer. Uh, for several reasons. One, uh, it reads as a statement of fact. We hear that. It sounds like we're making a statement of fact. Uh, we don't know that it's a statement of fact. We don't have the resources to continually research whether or not Massachusetts is a leader, whether or not vaccinations are the best, or any of this other language that's in here. So, so we don't have to spend any future time on this. We just want to strike that policy. We hear the answer is this. Uh, and as that this language came from, um, the DC notification, the memo they sent out at that time, and it just was left in there. But we felt that it was time to just move past this and start getting anything else moving forward. So that's up for vote tonight. Uh, you want to do the owner word or you want to talk to the nurses?
Um, sure. Did you want to talk about, um, data?
Yes, so the sexual harassment policy that we voted on and approved several weeks ago. Uh, there were some questions that came up. There's some language in there. Uh, we discussed that. And we didn't feel it was right to make those changes on our own, so we referred them off to the Google Council. They actually got back to us yesterday, I think. And so, uh, we cut the, their responses up there in the drive. You guys look at, they have the policy up there to look at. It's not on the agenda tonight, just because I don't think we're able to answer that. So we put on page ten the next time for, for reading the vote, or it's out there for me to look at now.
And then we already, we also updated our bullying policy, um, to match the current policy that NISC has suggested. Um, Mrs. Lee, I know you've got some questions regarding the policy, which we can discuss when we go into the votes.
Yep, thank you.
They were really good, very good comments. And I'm going to appoint Mr. Tomlin to be the chair of the student success and technology committee.
Can I say one thing about something, sorry?
Yes.
So we just, can I ask you guys to, um, go ahead, do what kind of policy?
What kind?
Cell phone policy.
That's a rule to Hondo. I agree with you about how the high school kids can use cell phones in the cafeteria.
They can use them on their lawn.
Yeah.
It's allowed and it's allowed when transitioning to.
Yeah, I disagree with that as well. So are you, but are they able to look at school policies?
So it's, yeah, the policy subcommittee, one of the, I was like that.
Are they able to though? Because I agree with you.
Who's that?
Like Mike and Laurie.
Yeah, I think most.
Are you asked Jeff? I'm not sure it's under our purview. That's why I'm saying.
We, we, we have a policy about cell phones.
Yeah. Well, like we, I read.
And you, hold on.
That's, that's.
I understand there are certain policy duty that you're, that you're. The actual service.
So, because I, I have a policy in place to run the schools.
Well, um, if, well, Jeff, right now, there's not any research pointing to cell phones being beneficial on kids' hands. I believe it's pointing to the exact opposite. We talk about mental health and wellness, and every research is, and every research is pointing to that. And it's disappointing that how high school will allow cell phones to be used on their lawn, change the hallway, transition. I don't know how that's.
That's not the argument. The argument is whether it's the purview of the school committee.
So who's purview of it?
It's purview of the schools.
Well, unless there's a cell phone policy.
We, we, we aren't having the school committee that trying to run the schools, doing policies.
So what happens?
Not, not the everyday running of the schools.
Okay.
If you have research, if you have research that you want to present, then you present it. We'll take a look at it when we make the decision on it.
So can I ask you, is that something we support, the superintendent?
What?
Self-advocacy at lunch. Passing the always by our school students.
I would leave it up to the principal and the assistant.
So I'm asking you as superintendent, is that something you support?
I don't know. If, if I was, I would, I would ask the principal. They run the buildings.
But you also.
I, I certainly, I'll tell you who I wouldn't ask. I wouldn't ask a parent. If, if, if it was their decision to do it, I would ask the people who run the building.
Sure. All that aside, we're talking about kids in a learning environment, kids in a lunch room. Where you're supposed to be, um, having a conversation with people. Our administrative team are the same. We're okay with you not doing that, not socializing. Keep your heads happy. You can be here.
Who's saying that's happening?
I, I have Jeff, three kids in the school. What's happening?
Well, there's five hundred kids in the school, so.
Jeff, ask the parent community. You can't be in denial for this because there's.
It's not about that, Julie. First of all, you're asking the question, whose decision is it?
Where?
About cellphone use in the cafeterias? It's developing administrators. You're asking me if I would support it? I would, I would, if the principal said that is a disruption of the school, then I wouldn't support it. They said, well, it's no problem, you know, if they're doing that stuff, then I would be okay with it.
Well, clearly, there's no problem. It's okay.
What?
Well, it's allowed and kids, no problem, right?
Well, if it's allowed, then they, they probably haven't seen an issue with it, or it hasn't been brought up. If you're saying there's research, then show us the research.
No, you're just waiting for that research. You want me to see.
You said all the research points to something.
Minutes on their phone.
No, you started off by saying all the research points to something, right?
Yeah, all the research with kids using cell phones and being touched and. It's, it's, it's harmful for kids. It's not.
I think he's suggesting that you take the research that you've seen and then trap send it on as like a leadership teams and say, here, I would like you to look at this. When, in considering cell.
Yeah, what's the research? I mean, we'll take a look at it.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure, sure.
And I'm trying to be, I've argumented at the bottom. What I'm trying to do is say that, number one, there's, there's a separation of power between the, between the school committee and the schools.
Sure.
Number one. And number two, if you have research that want, that's making no point, then, and I haven't seen it, other schools haven't seen it, show, show it to us. And it, you know, it's totally possible. We haven't seen all the research.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine that administration. That, that cellphone use with our kids is harmful for them. At the end, Debbie Ramon said he was.
And all I'm saying to show it to us, it's possible that a lot of research.
Point of information.
You said.
Point of information, policy on IJ and EBT is technology acceptable use policy. And Mike asked about a specific policy to look at. Not speaking to whether we can change it, fix our purview, put up a lawyer on that. But it looks like IJ would probably do the policy to look at, which specifically mentions mobile devices in it for the, for the policies that we. I think Jeff is probably right in terms of the purview of it. As, he is right, purview of it in terms of the building issue, but this policy can be repeated on to, to review. Whether we can change it or not to address the things you're concerned about is another topic.
And Julie, I absolutely a hundred and ten percent agree with you that if a kid is on their phone on Facebook at lunch, that literally sickens me in my core instead of learning how to talk and be with friends. That's a huge problem in our society, and I do not think cell phones should be allowed in school, even in high school. And I get it, there are many adults. It's part of our world. But if there is any way that we can get that, I support that.
Jeff, you, you spoke in recent, in a couple seconds about the school council. And the role they play in things like the handbook. Is this an issue that should be referred to them? Sure, with you, with the administration. I don't know if we've ever engaged with that group, but you've mentioned it a couple times in different settings.
Yeah, I mean, they, they deal with all of those issues and they deal with the handbook. So that, that's, if you have, if you have those kind of issues, it should go through the school council. That's what they're there for. And, and again, if you, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna decide what your role is gonna be. You can make general policies, but it's not to say, well, listen, my kids say, and not specifically you, just. Now, my kids say this is going on at school, and I want this policy changed to reflect that. Now, if you're, you know what I mean? So if you're on the school council, they review the student handbook. And so that's, that's where that stuff can come in. Because they can take a little more personal look at it, because that's really their job to, to kind of investigate what's really going on in the school. But they do it, they do it with students and they do it with administrators. And so there's a, a different kind of discussion that happens. They say, okay, this is what we care as one on. Is this what's going on? We're, we're here with this and that. And then the administrators will say, well, yeah, this is going on and we let it happen because of X, Y, Z. Or we don't let it happen because of X, Y, Z. And so that's how those changes get into the student handbook. So that's the place to have those kind of discussions, because there's an administrator, you're saying, well, do you as a superintendent support it? I don't support it or not support it because I don't have enough information. So that's the discussion you have, that a school council has with a group of students and with the administrators and the parents. So they can all discuss it, because then as kids, they'll say, will say, well, that's not happening, or it is happening, whatever the issue, maybe not cell phones, maybe something else. And that's how that, that, those things get changed in the student handbook. This isn't the format for that stuff. It just doesn't, one of the things that the student success.
And I'm not saying you're wrong about, I'm just saying it's not the format. Student success committee, we talked about in our meeting, potentially in some future school committee, we could be having one. We'll be specifically bringing the Hondo administration, the, the Hondo, the school council, into the school committee to talk with us about things that are going on in the school, Kells, Prime, our parents and others, being part of, we'll be potentially scheduled as part of our school committee. Let's just bring the Hondo PTL, let's have a Hondo focused meeting. We can dedicate a half an hour to, 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 to what's going on.
And I think we talked about that, because that needs to be done. And, and we talked about in terms of instead of this committee going to meetings, you invite those people here. Or if you want the principals to be, to report on it. But it's better to have that whole of representatives of the council to it. But that's not the job of this committee. We shouldn't point man at that.
No, I, I get what you're saying. Yeah, we should have. I wish we could have asked, and I don't know, maybe you emailed Sally, because I saw that, but I wasn't sure. Did you email her? That's what she said I was gonna get back.
She's, yeah, she's, I understand. She's very busy.
Right, right.
This is just a large, a very large issue that's not going away. We have to be able to help our students to manage these devices.
Why don't you as a parent reach out to her and.
I do as a parent.
Ask it as a request of the council to listen. See, that's different. Uh, group of parents, she would give you.
Is it a different group every year?
Um, they're always looking for members. I know I just had a parent ask me about something that was going on in the school. I don't think, I can't remember who it was, but my suggestion was if you feel that strongly, get involved, get on the student, uh, council, which I believe they did. So.
Okay.
That's the place for that stuff. So you can, as a parent, as opposed to this one, say, can you, is this something that you can refer to your, 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 your council to look at?
Okay. Like you come and present.
Then you can ask as a, as a committee, as a this committee, to have that committee come and present.
Yeah, yeah.
That's different. That's a different process.
Yeah, that's a difference.
Yeah.
Let me know if I can help you with that, because I wholeheartedly agree, even though I only have little kids. But I've seen a lot, done a lot of research, seen a lot of studies on how toxic social media is.
It also comes into a point that we've read several points in this superintendent's survey feedback about bullying harassment.
Yeah.
And that's why I think it probably becomes a bigger problem. One thing to distract students during the class meeting. Another thing, if it's a tool for bullying harassing students.
Yeah, right. I've heard a lot of people talk about TikToks and photos being taken of other students in the school and posted on social media about other people's consent and.
Just one, there's a paragraph that he proposed bullying calls and discussed.
Okay.
It will.
Yep. All right. Good. Yeah, I saw that cellphone thing earlier and.
Mr. Tomlin, did you want to give your report on student success and technology?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we did meetings, uh, yesterday, I think. I don't know. We met.
Meanwhile, you know, like.
We, school committees have always been on. So anyway, there's been, there's been meeting. This subcommittee happened recently. Uh, we met with Carol and Paul's very student. Um, we had a few things on the agenda we didn't get to all, and we spent a lot of time talking about the district improvement plan. And Carol told us more information about this portrait of a graduate, uh, idea which, I mean, I'm not feeling up for it, but I think, I think we need to start with that and develop, you know, I'm sure that's how it works, to start with that and develop the improvement plan around it. Uh, that will come, I guess, in time. So we spent a lot of time talking about that. We did talk about, uh, equity. Uh, I kind of brought up the point where I'd like to see more equity between the two elementary schools, and I think I've mentioned that before in these meetings. They're, they're different schools. They've operated independently for years. They have different groups and different activities and different offerings. And now we're one school district, and I don't know how much work has been done to sort of bring those two together. So that's one kind of topic that we might explore in the future. I don't know what's gonna come of that. Uh, so we spent a lot of time talking about that. Um, we asked Paul if he could get us some information on the, uh, cellphone. You mean cellphone, cellphone service in this building?
Yeah.
Right? Uh, he says they, they've done some things in the past about that, and he said he's gonna put up some information. Don't know if anything will come of that either, but it's something we're gonna look at. As well as, um, additional ways to use technology, not just for students in class, but for getting information on parents. So that's when we talked about, we'll meet again. We talked a little bit about trying to set a, don't want to call it a mission, but a charge for the committee. So we actually know, not only what we're gonna do over the next year, we can communicate to towns what the purpose is, since this is a new committee. It's not really, you know, budget self-explanatory, but student success can mean a lot of different things to a lot of people. So, uh, we will meet again probably in October. And go from there.
Excellent. All right. We are going to move on to our new business. Uh, I have a motion to approve the Hondo High School program of studies. Anyway.
I'll move it to the table.
Yep, that's all I need. Adam, can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, discussion.
Sorry, so the program of studies.
Yep, it's this, it's this big dog.
He tells the course selection.
And he unboots a.
He tells the course selection, the descriptions of all the classes offered.
Yeah. It's not in the handout.
Nope.
Sorry.
Jeff, can you, I don't remember if it was last year. So would you, Jeff, what role do we play when it comes to approving this one? I don't know how you would do this kind of task. Do you, was the program study? Yeah. And, and, and first I saw it was, what would it be this agenda?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have to approve it every year unless there's a change.
It's done in the fall though. I mean, not, it's usually done in the spring, isn't it?
Usually, um, this course just came out, had to transition. Uh, so there is a, a document in the drive that just shows just the change. Everything else remains the same. So that's why it's.
Sure, the whole course?
Yeah, yeah.
Julie, um, that question I've got on this is, some of the, this program study will be something for us to revisit after that corporate correctionary process takes place, to see whether that is in order to, to the. Or, or looking for it.
But this, this committee should look at it, because you know, where there's a change in that, you should look at. Plus, as Chrissy says, there was a cost, and then one cost, I think you'd be interested in this stuff. Um, Cal, Cal, what's the cost that we do it as Megan? What's the name of that else for the high school?
Those tools.
Oh, tools for living.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I could, yeah, that's a bit about that. But we have teachers teaching that, you know, just send us their curriculum on. I was interested in that too. I was interested in that too. So I, I would suggest, even though, even if it was, everything's been warned, new courses, it's a new committee. And, and if you're going to expand program and do any of that stuff, which we should be doing in the next three years, you should make yourself familiar with that. Because that's one thing that is, certainly is a purview and you should, you should be looking at that.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I hear what you're saying there. The confusion I had was like over the agenda Friday to look at this. It was the first time I'm coming for us, this seven week job and nobody's presented to us, nobody talks to us about release. Okay, so we get the vote on this change. I don't know.
Well, usually the principal would come in, that's why it's done on the floor, because that's when they're going to decide, it's just going to be new courses and then they, then they schedule. So, you know, the principal would say to you, here's the new, here are the new selections for next year. You take a look at it, vote on it. However, you're a new committee, so you haven't even, you haven't seen the documents to begin with. So since that's not done until, that's not really done until the spring, there should be a time to.
So look at it, but it's on the agenda for a vote. Should we table that until we have more information about this? That's a motion.
Why they don't.
It was a motion.
This is one lead, and I still think.
I thought, I thought I had.
It's interesting and I believe they're already running the course.
Is it for this current academic year that they're asking to end this course or is it for next year?
She thinks that already run this course, but this should have been given to us in the summer then.
Thank you, Ron.
What, they should have sent this out in the summer.
So, so.
I'm just, I'm sure, yeah, maybe. I asked with the transition.
So they, they, like, your courses are up in winter, kind of late winter. And then they present them to the school committee and then as changes to the book and then you vote on it. And, you know, before they schedule, they're scheduling in the summer, so there's, that's the, that's the timeline. So you're probably, you're most likely, and I didn't see, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, but you're most likely seeing courses that are already running.
Yeah.
So, and you, you should, because you voted on it, then that is when you can ask to vote and you should see it before they run.
Right.
Um, so, and probably to write it, probably because that's part of the transition. That wasn't a vote in the spring, was it? Yeah, so that's, I think you just got to see what's with it, so.
So what's.
I think what you could do now maybe is have the principals, next time they're here, present on the changes. So you get least familiar with the new courses so you can ask the questions.
And definitely this is down in this spring. We figure where the courses are.
Yeah, the vote now, that's what it's symbolic, I think, but it shouldn't be, it should be something, yeah. Again, I think it's by something that just missed in the transition.
So where's the motion?
Wait, can, and just can I ask a question? So when we come to vote, we're voting on the two additions or the whole document?
We vote on the document.
The document, yeah.
Just like you vote, just like when you vote on the negotiation, the contract, both voting and the whole contract, even though it was just some change.
It's just that one change.
Okay, so the schools were living in the ice. But then.
There was a math one, so that was.
They just added two courses.
Yeah. So do we want, did we want to table this and have them come and speak to us? Um, how is.
I mean, they're already doing it, so what does it matter? I mean.
Well, my suggestion is given it's a bar, you probably should know all the courses. That's something you want to know about because it's your vote, so. Given that it's already run, my suggestion would be to table the vote, have them come and talk about the courses, just so you know they are and then make the vote. If you make, if you, if you make the vote now, you're going to forget about it. It's going to be.
All right.
Can I ask, wasn't there a course being run at the high school, a life skills class, last time we toured? Is that separate from tools for living?
No, and why do you have to change the name?
That's what I was thinking.
Because it's.
All tools for kids.
So Adam has made a motion to table this. Do we have a second?
Second.
So am I? Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I as well opposed. The motion to table the Tejando High School Program Studies until later date has passed. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the fiscal two thousand twenty-three, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three superintendent votes?
So.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Jeff, I like them, I think, I think they're a little bit tactical a couple times now on this. Um, there were a couple of titles within what I saw, so I'm just going to, you know, women who called with it. Um, but I think it's in line with what we expect out of a superintendent who's, has an end date, who expires sometime. That expiration. Expiration date, so. You can sell some.
Yeah, it's accounting now. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
I am an I as well opposed. Motion to approve fiscal year two thousand twenty-three superintendent votes passes. Could I have a motion to approve the updated mentor coordinator job description?
So.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am an I as well opposed. Motion to approve the updated mentor coordinator job description passes. Um, J I C F B, the bullying convention is a first read. Are there any comments on either of these documents? I do know that this week had some comments that were, she put within the document. Julie, did you want to talk, speak to those right now?
Uh, I don't know.
I don't know. Um, I do, I'll start by saying, you highlighted something, you said it was a very important piece of policy and one the community should know, else while you read it out loud.
Yeah.
Um, bullying and cyberbullying are prohibited at a location, activity, function or program that's not school related or through the use of technology or electronic device that is not home released or used by the Berlin Wilson School District. If the act or acts in question create a hostile environment at school for the target, infringe on the rights of the target at school and/or material and substantially disrupt the education process or the orderly operation of a school.
Yeah, the reason I, I made a comment on that, I think it's important for the community to understand that this is, this policy is in place, this is outside school related functions, activities.
Is there an existing policy of this agreement?
No, there's an existing policy, this is the NASC version.
Does anyone have any, um, opinions about that or do you feel it's? Um.
Does it have a change from the previous policy?
It's.
Yes, it's, uh, there are changes, I believe they're fairly close, but ours is dated. So, so the consequences for bullying per this policy would apply to a student bullying as per this policy's definition from their bedroom at night to another student or, you know, off, off campus or outside of any school hours or activities.
I think if it was.
It's hard to interpret.
It triples it in the school, right?
Well, yeah, because it creates.
If you're being bullied outside of school and you have to face that bully or in school, I would think there'd be named the consequences. Could be my guess as to why. We've actually had a parent come to us with that exact concern last year. I, I have this issue, yeah. So I, then it was handled. Um, the school principal or a designated shall promptly investigate the report of bullying using the bullying, cyberbullying report form. And Julie asked, can we see this form? Do we have one? Probably not, right? This is a brand new policy.
Okay.
So maybe what we can do is find out in our policy meeting.
Sure.
Um, about that particular form. I can also find out from other districts. Um, and it says annual training shall be provided for school employees and volunteers who have significant contact with students and preventing, identifying, responding to and reporting incidents. And Julie asked a really good question. She said, what annual training does the B B R S D staff receive? And I'm branded, this is a new document, so they wouldn't have received it in the past, but is there anything that we're currently doing that would speak to that?
There's already.
Excellent. Does anyone have any other comments, uh, this first read?
I'd be interested in potentially having the school committee go through that training as well.
I agree. Good idea, actually, it's a great idea. Do they also do like a sexual harassment one for teachers?
Yeah.
I'm strange. Okay, so that was the first read. Um, our new COVID policy is both a first read and a vote. If the discussion is necessary, we can do that once the motion and second are made. Could I have a motion to approve the updated COVID policy?
So.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm an I as well opposed. Motion to approve the updated COVID policy passes. Um, we have a new section called school committee questions, comments and user agenda items. Um, and I would like to start off by saying thank you to the subcommittees for the work behind the scenes. I don't think that the public has any idea of how much work we do before we come to the table. And I know you guys did some great work this week. It's really, it's actually, I feel almost kind of nerdy saying it, but I'm excited about it, so. Um, so thank you for all that, that hard work because, you know, organizing schedules, sitting down, talking about it, the work that comes out of it. You're doing a great job, I appreciate that. And I also want to thank Sebastian, we can't see he's behind the camera, but he's always here making sure that this is all set up. It didn't happen last week, but man, he tried, or last couple weeks ago, he tried very hard to get us online. It was a situation outside of his control, so thank you Sebastian for all you do for us, appreciate it. Does anyone else have any questions, comments or future agenda items that they want to?
I was previously coming there, we're only beginning to finish Tejando specific meeting with the school council, perhaps October, November timeframe to do that. Maybe June, September, maybe, particularly with both elementary schools in order sometime this year as well.
Um, are upcoming meetings? We are having one obviously on September twenty-seventh and that is going to be to vote on the appointment of Mrs. Carol Costello as superintendent on retirement of superintendent Chelsea. Um, we also have an October eleventh meeting and we'll have an October twenty-fifth one if needed for COVID, we'll get all of our work done. Smooth sailing after that. Um, could I motion to adjourn?
So.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I as well, speaking to that meeting.